Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're up to the public hearing portion of today's meeting and we have three public hearings. Christie?
Yep, hi.
Hi.
Um, I'm Christie Gross, I'm a planner with the planning department and we are here to talk about oh twenty twenty-two zero zero four L U P A and oh twenty twenty-two zero zero three G D P. You can run these public hearings concurrently. Uh, applicant is Gene Peters and Mark Hanson. The property is located in the west half of the northwest quarter of section twenty-nine in Rochester Township. And it's approximately one mile west of the Rochester city limits. Its current zoning district is the A two agricultural protection zoning district. Its current land use plan is resource protection potential suburban. This was changed by the Rochester Township, um, re- at Rochester Township request and you, the county board, changed it a few months ago. And so now the applicant is here to change a portion of the site from potential support suburban to suburban development. There is a feedlot located to the east and that is why they're only, um, changing a portion of the site at this time to make sure that they meet the feedlot setbacks for the new development. There's floodplain and hydro soils on the property. Those are incorporated into their general development plan. Uh, this was their land use exhibits. You can see, um, north is on the left side and so, um, they have developed Millie Meadows and Millie Meadows Second, um, along the west side of the property and now this is just east of that. They recently updated their general development plan. Um, our original staff report had a number of conditions that came from the Rochester Fire Department. Um, we believe that their updated plans reflect those conditions. We just haven't gotten the opportunity to send that to the Rochester Fire Department to verify it, so we do recommend that those conditions stay. Um, we've given you the historic, um, land development, uh, table consistently now for a few meetings. This is gonna be the last time you see this table. This is the last, these two applications today are the last two land use plan amendments under our current plan. So any new land use de- plan developments you'll see will be under our updated plan and will have different findings. And the location criteria we use for land use plan de- developments is proximity and access, site attractiveness, is it unsuitable for resource areas? Are there any development limitations? Is it orderly? Is it environmentally sensitive? Is there a land use compatibility? Um, what kind of non-farm development is it and its proximity to airports? In reviewing the location criteria, this location met those requirements for being timely in that area. Um, we look at six findings when making land use plan decisions. Was there any mistakes made? Have conditions changed? Have policies changed? Is there an anticipated shortland shortage? Is the land suitable or better land suitable for similar designations? And is there an alternative to the proposal that better meets the intent of the plan? And in reviewing the findings, um, this, this, this development is moving east from already developed areas. It met the suitability for the land and it made sense to be located where it is. There are several general development plan findings as well. Are road connections adequate? Is the layout consistent with floodplain regulations? Is it in accordance with the land use plan? Are street patterns appropriate? Um, and all of those findings were also in favor. Um, this was the clues model as revised, taking out a old landfill that, um, was cited on the property. And so the land use scores scored this area very similar to other, um, developed land in the area. It's right on the edge of that dark purple area and that dark purple area was the best suited for residential development. So currently we are in the second and third phases of this application process where you are making the decision on the land use plan amendment and the county general development plan. After this, this goes to the township for the local approvals. So they're gonna approve a general development plan, a zoning district amendment, the final, uh, the preliminary and final plots. You'll see the final plot once it comes back for final signing. Uh, the planning commission held a public hearing on August fourth and they recommended approval based on site staff's findings. And, um, they also, uh, that's just the motion. Um, the general development plan, they also recommended approval for it with eight conditions. And those conditions really came from the Rochester Fire Department, um, referral. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? All right, we will open the pub-
Sure.
No? We have a question. I'm sorry.
I did ask the presenters if they wanna say anything, Gene or Mr. Hanson? They asked for the-
Morning Commissioners, my name is Jason Kappers. I'm with G Cubed Engineering. We're the engineers, um, for this project. Um, not too much to say. I think Christie explained it very well. Uh, we agree with staff findings, um, and also the eight conditions that the, um, the fire marshal has set forth. Um, those will also be, they were included on the updated, uh, G D P that we gave you guys and we'll continue to include those in the preliminary plat once we go through the township processes. So, um, with that, I really don't have too much to add. Um, I will be here if you have any questions.
It appears, I just would observe it appears that you, you know, it's stage one, stage two, this is stage three and the stage fours and is at least a conceptual model. So it seems very, very much like what we've approved before and part of a, part of a first development, I guess.
Right, yep, perfect.
Okay, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing for twenty twenty-two zero zero four L U P A by Gene Peters and twenty twenty-two zero zero three G D P by Gene Peters. Would anybody like to speak for or against this development? Anybody like to speak for or against this? Third time, anybody like to speak for or against this?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We needed approval for each of those. As one.
All right, so-
Yes.
Take, that was for L U P A. How about the G D P approval?
Move the, uh, general development plan.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have a public hearing, um, let's hear about it first and then I'll open it.
Okay, yep, um, our next public hearing is by Virginia Wright Peterson. It's for oh twenty twenty-two zero zero five L U P A. And it is in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section eleven in Marion Township. It's just south of highway fourteen and east of Sixtieth Avenue Southeast. It's currently zoned A three agricultural district. And, um, I just wanted to highlight there is R one, which is low density residential zoning on the west hand side and south of the property. Um, otherwise it's surrounded by other agricultural land. It is a potential suburban, um, uh, uh, land use, land use designation and so they are requesting it to go to suburban development. Um, there is some floodplain hydro soils on the property which, um, can be addressed. They can share the driveway for the additional site. Um, what the applicant is going for is to be able to split the lot into two so that they could have, um, there, there'll be a future zone change requested for, uh, rural residential land, um, zoning diste- district which requires five acre lots. This is currently a ten acre lot and so, um, their plan is to just develop two single family homes, one additional one from what's there. Um, this is the table that we've shown you in the past and the requests are consistent with, um, what's been approved in the past. This one has higher acreage per lot because there's only two that will be proposed in the future. Um, again, it met the location criteria based on what is surrounding, um, and how it's being proposed. It fits with the, um, the rural residential zoning district will allow kind of a buffer between the higher density of the R one district to the lower density of the agricultural district. Um, all of the land use plan, land findings were in favor of the request. Um, this application process is much smaller than some other ones because it is, um, just for two lots and so the first stage here is at the land use plan amendment, then they'll be coming back for a zoning district amendment. And then it would just be a staff approved meets and bounds before they build. The planning commission again voted, um, in favor of the request. And, um, they're recommending that you approve the land use plan amendment to change ten acres from resource protection to poten- resource protection potential suburban to suburban development based on the findings of fact within the staff report. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Sure, um, you've introduced something new that I didn't realize that we have an option of a five acre rural.
Yeah, there is a R A zoning district which is rural residential and that requires five acres for the minimum lot size.
And it appears that the others, I'm looking at this map, it appears that the other properties on the east side of Sixtieth are all conforming to that?
East, um, yes, yes.
Maybe, not quite, but okay.
Oh, the ones directly south are R one, those are two and a half acre lots.
Okay. So the property owners requested a five acre.
Correct.
And you see that as a buffer to the ag land, that little bit of ag land exists before Chester. It just seems like we're being inconsistent. If we've got, you know, two acre lots or one side, we've got two and a half acre lots to the south and then we suddenly do this one spot zone.
Well, no, it's not spot zoning because it's just a lower density residential district. And, um, Sixtieth Avenue was always looked at as kind of a border between, um, the higher density residential development and the agricultural development. And that's why you see so much R one property on the east side with just a little bit to the south of this property. Um, this property, based on the topography and, um, the hydro soils, there really is only one additional lot on it. And the applicant has lived there her whole life and she would just like to continue to have a small hobby farm. Good, thank you.
Any more questions? Is the applicant here? Would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'm Virginia Wright Peterson. Um, one clarification, I haven't quite lived there all my life. Um, but my family has held it for three generations since the nineteen thirties. The plan is just to add one additional house so my daughter and grandchildren, we can extend a couple more generations in the same place. The reason for the five acres as well is my grandchildren seem to think they want goats and chickens and some things along those lines.
I'm really, I'm very sorry, but through your mask, I'm not making out one word you're saying.
Oh.
That, can you maybe just speak a little slower or lower your mask, but it's, it's muffling you?
Um, so here, I'll just, self-disclosure, I tested positive for COVID last week. My healthcare provider, I'm out of isolation, but my healthcare provider expects me to wear it through Thursday.
Sure.
And maybe I can speak a little more slowly.
If you just speak a little more slowly, I have a hearing class and the combination, I just can't make out what you're saying.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, I have not lived on the land my entire life, but my family has held it for three generations since the nineteen thirties. I'm the third generation to live there. Um, uh, we, uh, just want to split the, uh, property in half so my daughter and grandchildren can build a home and can, we can continue living there as, as a, as a family. And the reason for the five acres and going for kind of the hobby farm is my grandchildren wanna have goats and things, they think. That's still being negotiated.
So they wanna get your goat.
That's it, I'm drawing the line at the horse, for sure.
Very much, very much.
I appreciate that county's, uh, careful land use plan. I, I will note that it is rather expensive and time consuming for a family just to split a lot like this, but otherwise I really appreciate your efforts.
Observation, yeah, thank you. All right, so now I will, uh, open the public hearing for zero two two, zero twenty twenty-two zero zero five L U P A by Virginia Wright Peterson. Would anybody like to speak for or against this? Would anybody like to speak for or against this? Third and final time, would anybody like to speak for or against this? I'll entertain a motion to close it.
Move to approve, to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion, thoughts?
Move to approve the, um, uh, land use plan for zero two zero two two dash zero zero five L U P A by Virginia Wright Peterson.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, carries. Thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda. Prove the August sixteenth minutes. Proclaim September ninth through eighteenth welcoming week in Olmsted County. Approve revocable license to use property at Lake Zemba Park. Approve temporary liquor license. Approve the final plant for Lily Farms South. Yeah, fourth, yep. Accept a strong foundations grant award. Approve resolution and vendor consent letter. Approve the amended amendment to the Dodge Olmsted Waste Management Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Regular agenda, first up. Discussion decision items and elections update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Pete Eason, Deputy Administrator with our Physical Development Division. Uh, today, uh, I'm just gonna tee the, the presentation up. Mary Blair Heft and Luke Turner and Mike Steer will share a little bit more on the background and the work of the elections this year. Um, just wanted to basically, uh, briefly on the status, Mary and Luke will give you a, on a status update on how elections has been going this year. So, uh, Luke in particular will kind of go into more of the specifics on all that goes, all that's involved that's often not understood or not, not, isn't seen by the general public. So Luke will go into more depth on some of that work. I just wouldn't, wanted to, uh-
Maybe if some of them people are outside, you could call them back in. Just a thought.
Just an idea.
I just, I, uh, wanted to remind the board and thank the board for the significant investment in the elections. If it wasn't that long ago, back in two thousand and sixteen, we had one, just over one person dedicated formally to, to elections and it was really volunteer driven, but a lot of volunteers made the elections work. Um, fast forward to today, um, now it's, it includes over four permanent F P Es and a number of temporary staff uh, with a significant budget increase. So I just wanted to thank the board for that significant investment and, and remind you that that was a, a major change from past elections. So with that, we have Mary and Luke in particular, uh, uh, as our elections team representatives. Today, they're gonna just go into, Mary will kick it off to, uh, give you a brief update on where the current year's elections are at and, and she'll hand it over to Luke and Mike Steer after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners. I am Mary Blair Heft. I am the Director of Property Records and Licensing. And behind me is, um, a team of Luke. He is actually the expert in elections, so he'll do most of the speaking. I'm just gonna do a brief update on elections. Right now, they are processing absentee ballots which are being requested daily. They are just preparing them. They aren't being mailed yet, but as of today, they've already received thirty-seven hundred and fifty of those requests. They're evaluating all the precinct totes and supplies and replenishing. They're proofing the ballots and Luke continues to hire and interview for staffing, which seems to be an ongoing issue as the kids go back to college. So he has to be very flexible with the schedules. Now, the primary, I'm not sure how to run this, the primary goal here was to go through, um, what Olmsted County is responsible for with elections and have it be understood that our job is to follow state statutes. Chapters two hundred through two twelve. We, um, have very little wiggle room as far as deviating. Um, and so I'm just gonna, Luke is gonna highlight it on training and processes, accuracy and security and talk about the supplies and the equipment. So I'm gonna hand it over to Luke Turner. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, we're gonna cover the election judge process on how to become an election judge. The individual municipalities, school districts, cities and townships all hire their own election judges. Uh, they recruit and retain and hire that group of judges. Olmsted County is responsible for training the judges. And it's actually a two, uh, two-year cycle process. They're good for the entire election cycle. It's not necessary to, necessarily two years. So June of twenty twenty-four, everybody's training resets and we have to start the process over again. Uh, what it looks like is we have four different classes, uh, or five different classes here. Three of them are ones that we, uh, fill and advertise online, um, have signups for them. The other two are smaller groups that we just do one time for specific training. So our election judge is a two-hour class each cycle. It's for, required for all election judges. Um, one thousand plus judges come through Olmsted County for training each year. Head judge is, is a little smaller. It's just the, the head judges at each precinct. Um, Rochester does have more, more than one per sometimes, so you're looking at a group of maybe a couple hundred. Poll pad training is recommended for all judges and that's mostly because it's best to learn the poll pads hands-on. Um, the second two trainings, ballot board and healthcare are one hour training each, but those are for those specific groups. So the ballot board, we do a one hour training with the ballot board prior to every election on what to look for when accepting or rejecting ballots. And then the healthcare is just with that specific healthcare crew. That is a, a two or three day process where we visit the healthcare facilities. We'll train just that team of four or five judges specifically for that process and that's an additional hour of training.
So the ballot board is essentially an oversight committee to ensure the accuracy and validity of the, of the ballot.
Correct. So the ballot board is comprised of, um, current makeup is eight judges, um, four from each Democrat and four from the Republican Party. Uh, they're, we're required to hire off the caucus list first. So we send the advertisement out, try to fill those positions off the party caucus lists that come to us earlier in the year. Uh, and their role is again to review the numbers and signatures to what we have in the system that matches the individual signature envelope that they're accepting or rejecting. And they make most of, or all of those decisions. The ballot board will make those decisions.
Luke, when you speak of a cycle, you're speaking of a two-year cycle, not each election, not the primary, the general.
That's correct.
It's a two-year cycle.
Yeah, e- each election, it'll start off in the election year and then the training's good still for the off year. So if you do have those special elections, uh, school district election, for example, the judge training's still good for that training from their previous year.
And then the ballot board meets just after the general or does the ballot board meet after the primary and the general?
So the ballot board, we have meet, uh, two days a week, all through the prime, all through every election. So they met for the special primary, August primary, and now they'll start meeting, uh, September twenty-fifth, I think is our first one. And we'll meet every Tuesday and Thursday with more frequent if needed based on demand. If we have more, uh, intake of ballots, they'll meet more to review the signature envelopes as they come in from the voters.
So their focus is predominantly on the absentee ballots?
Correct, exactly.
And so they, they review and then those ballots are held until late, they're not opened then?
That's correct. So they're, uh, in a secrecy envelope and then the signature envelope. The signature envelopes are, are what's reviewed. The signature envelopes are what's accepted or rejected. From there, it goes in our storage, which is our secure, uh, ballot room. In addition to that, any voted ballot for the current election, we keep in our large safes that we purchased in twenty twenty. Uh, and they stay in there. Any voted ballot that's been accepted is in those states until, uh, we start the process of opening, which can happen one week prior to the election. Uh, seven days, so the, usually the Wednesday prior to election day, we can start opening and processing those.
So essentially the four from each party.
Mm-hmm.
And to validate and make sure this is the, a key step in election integrity.
Correct.
Driven by law, or people, they have to agree on it. So that's how a significant part of the mailing
is, is guarantee integrity. Right, exactly. And it, it's always a two-person. You always have two signatures stamping off that that ballot's been accepted. It's never one person with elections, so at any point, there's never one person that just says this is good. It's always, two people have to agree to accept or reject.
So I just, uh, I'm probably skipping ahead, getting ahead of myself. So you gotta absentee ballot and you gotta, they say you gotta, you do one of these three things. Social Security's gotta let match or the driver's license gotta match or the address. Do it those ballots, so you don't run them through the machine until you do verify one of those things?
Right, so if it's accepted, it's placed in our storage and held, uh, for, until we start opening. If it's rejected, uh, we'll contact the voter. We reject the ballot, it's not able to be, um, counted and we'll send a replacement to that voter.
This reason.
But, exactly, explaining.
Until you verify this social security number, the D L, the driver's license or the address, you don't run it through the machine?
Correct.
So there's been a lot of question, the only reason I think I knew that, uh, but there's been a lot of questions of they think that these get run through the machine and then it's not validated. How do you know which vote to pull out of the machine? So I think you answered that question.
Yep.
The next process I'll go over is voter registration. So this is something that happens all the time, uh, whether it's an election year or not, we're going through this process. We can receive applications either online, paper through the mail, paper in person. Um, in, in Olmsted County elections process is each one. How we verify the information, uh, in the days following, it's automatically compared to either the, the driver's license number is compared to the Department of Vehicle Services or the social security numbers, uh, compared to the social security office, uh, to match up that voter in the registration process. Um, if for whatever reason, one of those isn't in match, we can either challenge the record, contact the voter, send them a new, uh, item. Uh, but the record, if we're never able to, um, come to a resol- resolution as in match the number prior to an election, that record would be marked as challenged where they would still need to provide that identification to register on election day. So if we haven't pre, pre-verified one of those two numbers, we'll have to do that process. The third thing is the address. We verify those using postal verification cards. So anybody that registers or updates their address or voter record in any way, we send them a postal verification card with that new information. If it comes back to us as, again, undeliverable, that's where we need to take those additional steps. Investigate, is this a, do they actually live in this location? Do we need, again, challenge the record to where they would need to show proof of residence to vote on election day?
So the point is, we're not excluding anyone.
Correct.
Just maintaining the integrity of the election, guarantee that they are indeed registered where they live and so on. So that, once they cast the ballot, it's a valid ballot accepted and counted.
That's correct, yeah. So the additional Rochester maintenance that we do that, um, I touched on with the challenges on the previous slide, um, but we also receive, felony challenges daily for, uh, daily or weekly depending, guardianships through the courts. So those are, those come through electronically to us and we update the rec- the records accordingly, whether it's adding a felony challenge to the record, removing one from the record, and then same thing with guardianship. So we're constantly updating the rosters.
See a little bit more about that.
Sure, yeah. So we receive, uh, direct information from the Department of Corrections that these five voters have uh, had a felony added to their record. So we'll verify that, verify that they have that and then we'll add it to the record and they won't be allowed to vote on election day.
So we are continuously being notified when someone has a, a felony conviction and we can continuously update our voter registration so that people who are prohibited from voting can't vote?
That's correct. And that happens week by week, uh, election years, off years, all of the above.
And then the guardianship one, would you talk a little bit about that?
So the only person that's allowed to remove someone's right to vote based on capability i- is a judge. They have to legally have their right to removed from a judge specifically and that's the same process. So it'd come over from the court events uh, indicating that this person had their right to vote remove, uh, removed for guardianship.
And that would be, for instance, a person who no longer ha- has, has, has cognitive impairments.
Right.
There would have to have been a court action to declare that.
Exactly. It ha- it has to come from the courts, not a, a sibling or a child. It has to come from the courts for that.
Can it come through the medical profession? Can a doctor, if someone's in a nursing home, say this person is impaired from voting?
For guardianship, it has to come through the courts for the voter record.
Okay.
And then the postal returns. So. We get a ballot back or we get a voter registration back, then you follow up with those folks?
That's great. If whether it's about or a postal verification card, we'll reach out, we can resend them. Depending on the situation, if they're in state and they moved to another county, we can forward that information to the other counties saying. This individual moved to your county and they can register them to vote there. If it's within our own county, we can contact the voter to verify which address they live at, the old one or the new one. So. Each one of those we investigate and look into.
So one of the things that I was concerned about is that there was a general mailing of of to notify people of their. Their precincts because there were change of precincts. And or also there was a general mailing and telling people how to get absentee ballots and some of those then got returned. What were the general mailings that went out and then what happened with those that were returned?
So the general mailings were required to notify individuals of redistricting that their precincts changed. So we sent a. Mailer, a postal verification following redistricting to every household. Again, same thing, notifying them that your polling place may have changed. With that, some of the cards came back. Anything that came back as undeliverable or no longer lives in Olmsted County, we follow the same procedures based on. How it came back. So if it's in another county, we'll forward it there for them to register them in the new county. If it's in within Olmsted County, we'll potentially update them to the new address with working with the voter. If it comes back as just undeliverable, we can add that postal challenge to the record. So where they'll need to show proof of residence on election day to vote. So it adds that extra layer. If it came back to us and we don't, it's just undeliverable, they'll still have to show that they do live there on election day rather than. Pre-registering where you can check in, provide your address and vote.
And what is the status of those postcards in terms of data privacy?
So we don't share this and I'll, I, we didn't, we chose not to share those. I'll. Refer to the county attorney's office on the specifics of all that, but I know it's not private data. It's individual voters' data and. Would prefer not to share that with everybody where everybody lives.
Thank you. Well, could you go back to the inactive, one back one second? One more. Previous slide?
Sure.
So we also get notified when the, from the Department of Health of people who are deceased?
That's correct. And that's less, it's more of a monthly list. We receive a monthly list of. Hundred voters, fifty voters, somewhere in there, and we again process through all those as usual.
And so that's, it's a continuous, continuously updating the voter registration with notifications of people who've. Been deceased, people who've moved, people who are under guardianship, people who have new felonies.
That's correct. The last thing I'll touch on there is the annual list maintenance. This is every, the first, it's not the first, it's January fifteenth, February fifteenth. Early in the year, each year, the Secretary of State inactivates everybody that has four years of inaction on their voter record. If you only vote in the presidential election and only vote in the presidential election, this won't apply to you because it's within that four-year gap. But for someone that hasn't voted for four years, hasn't updated their address, it's just been active. It automatically drops it to the inactive status to where they'd need to register showing those proof of identifications again. And that's a yearly site that happens every year. So I'll go over a couple of election accuracy and integrity measures that we have here too. So a couple of things is we do have paper ballots. So for every person that voted, we do have a paper ballot on hand and we keep it for the twenty-two month. Storage. How we treat the ballots is there's always two people with a ballot. It's never alone with one staff member. It's always multiple people with a ballot. The ballot storage is always placed in that secure room, which limited access. Again, in that room, we have the two-person policy. So you can't go in that room. Without two people. And then we also do daily reconciliation. So we make sure. The ballots that the ballot board has accepted, whether it's fifty ballots today, we'll go in there and reconcile that we have fifty in the safe. And that number always matches through the process. For handling, again, always two people. I think we touched on the rest of those. We had the Department of Homeland Security review our building for the physical security and we took some of the suggestions. Some of that was for the grant money that we received in twenty twenty from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. Used specifically to buy safes, used specifically to protect the integrity of elections and protect the, just the security of the building itself. A lot of that was into the updates to our front counter to where we at now this year glass, the ballot security. And different items like that. We partner with local law enforcement. We'll provide them with information on upcoming election dates and. Different public options, just so they're in the loop and they're aware of where voting is going on. We work with emergency preparedness. So we have backups and solutions whether. Something happens during absentee voting, we have backup plans or whether it's on election day, so where there's maybe an alternative voting location. We communicate with Secretary of State's office frequently. They provide us. I T. Updates and we coordinate with them about specific threats, whether it's cybersecurity and I T. And then also we work with our I T. Staff here with Olmsted County very closely and I'll let. Mike take over for the next slide to touch a little further on that.
Hello, I'm Michael Steer with I T. S. I'm here to review, talk through our security process for the cyber side of the world and to give Luke a break from talking. So we have the U S. B. Drives from the, from the slide up there. You can see the voting machine, U S. B. Drive. That is verified against a paper printout as well. We take that U S. B. We upload it to an isolated computer that is not connected to the internet. There's no internet activity from this point. So the U S. B. Is imported into our election or software. And then we also verify what's imported against what was printed out physically. So we have that double check, just like what Luke has on the rest of the process. Once everything's uploaded, it is then consolidated into a database on again, an offline system. And that information is then exported and verified through paper printouts. Before it's sent over to physically walked over to a different machine that has internet-only connectivity for the purpose of uploading it to the Secretary of State. So the entire process, there's a double check. There's an audit process that happens from the export from the voting machine to upload to the server. Export for the purpose of uploading to the Secretary of State and the results site. And I'm not used to folks speaking, so I probably spoke too fast. Let me know if anything needs to be repeated. But that's how we keep our elections as integral, keep the integrity of elections as much as possible by keeping it offline. And these setups are required by the state of Minnesota, so we can only install ratified or certified solutions.
So that across the state, there's, it's every county is following the same kind of isolated.
Very similar, depending upon the vendor they selected.
Very similar, depending on what?
The vendor they select.
The venue?
Vendor.
Vendor.
Vendor, the vendor. Say a little bit more about that.
So the vendor that we use here in Olmsted County has a certain topology they put forward to the Minnesota. The state of Minnesota needs to certify as a valid install for a purpose of elections. So. Each vendor that supplies the election equipment, election processing has to be both federally approved and. State certified. So therefore, any updates their software has have to go through a certification process. So if they change their topology. For example, if they wanted to add a different style of tabulator at the very beginning, that would require a recertification of their. Proposal. So we can't purchase things that are not certified by the Minnesota.
I got it.
I'm sorry, what?
I got it. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so next we're going to talk about preparing the supplies. The ballot preparation in general is completed by the vendor. They have a separate layout and they work with the state. After we do candidate filing, we insert all the information into our system. The vendor pulls all that down and provides us with initial layout. From there, we start proofing. So we'll provide the ballots to each municipality, school district, township, anyone that has a race on our ballot. We'll show them the P D. F. File of it and ask them to prove the overall layout of their corresponding precincts. Olmsted County does proof the federal, state and county races. From there, we go into ordering and we always make sure we order enough ballots for election day. So the state guidance is to order a hundred and twenty percent of expected turnout. We'll look at the six-year, ten-year statistics for a general election versus a primary election. Last general election, we had ninety-some thousand voters, so we're going to earn at least a hundred and twenty percent of that for election day. Just to make sure we don't have any of those shortages shortages on election day. The rest of the supplies, as Mike had touched on earlier, the Secretary of State approves. Versions of software that can be used in the state of Minnesota, whether it's tabulators, assisted voting devices or the upload software. And Olmsted County is responsible for choosing which one to purchase and which one fits our needs best. When doing so, we always work with I T. S. To make sure that we're secure with them and they're comfortable with our choice as well. In addition to that, we provide the physical supplies to the polling locations. So total supplies will put together for each location, including flags, signage. Anything that you could expect them to need on election day. These are the four main pieces of equipment that we currently use. The Auto Mark's top left is probably our oldest piece of equipment. Then the D S. Eight fifty and the D S. Two hundred on the right side are the two tabulators. The eight fifty is used for the absentee by mail. And the D S. Two hundreds are what you'll see at the polling locations. In the bottom left, I included the electronic rosters, the poll pads as well. For testing the processes, so whenever we are, leading up to an election, we have to do preliminary testing for all of the equipment. So what that looks like is a multi-week process. It takes hundreds of hours to go through. So we have a test deck for each precinct. So currently, it's a hundred and ten precincts and the test deck has a unique number of votes for each candidate. Basically, we're verifying that the machines can read each mark and tabulates correctly. So these uniquely marked test decks are fed through. All the different various media sticks and tabulators. And what that looks like, so for an example, the May twenty-fourth special primary. We had test X of a hundred and nine, meaning a hundred and nine uniquely marked ballots for each precinct. We fed that through the election day, election day backup, absentee, absentee backup and the eight fifty. And we totaled over. The total of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty ballots were fed through machines by us to test that the machines were accurately tabulating. All of that has to be a hundred percent. There's no off by one percent. It's one hundred percent match after we go through that forty-five thousand. As a result of that, the May twenty-fourth special primary had a voter turnout of twelve thousand, seven hundred. So. We thoroughly test these machines, especially with the primaries, we end up testing the machines more than they're used on election day. The next piece of a testing is the upload testing. So we're allowed to go through the process ahead of time. We use the results from the preliminary testing. And actually go through the whole process. So we'll use the software that Mike had touched on earlier. We'll compile the results and then we'll actually upload it to the states on a practice site. And again, from the state site, we compare it to those paper receipts to make sure it's a one-to-one match, to make sure it matches through the whole process. The next thing we have is the public accuracy test. Again, using the same test decks, we always publish in the post bulletin. The time and date of the public accuracy test, open our doors. And we test at least each congressional district, legislative district, each countywide commissioner district or each county commissioner district. Each warrant and each school district will be represented. I think for this upcoming one, I will need a minimum of. We'll have to have one for each commissioner district. So six or seven different test decks will be fed through publicly. Public's allowed to come in, use the auto mark, see the results, and we do that prior to each election. So next is we'll back to the absentee and ballot board. We had touched on this a bit earlier, just to go in a bit more. It consists of election judges that from major political parties and we always pair them up that way. But the board may also include deputy county auditors or deputy city clerks who have received the same training as the judges. So that's where our staff can augment them. What it looks like in our office is our staff usually runs a computer, checking in and making sure everything's going in the right category while the judges verify the. Signatures and making sure that's a match. Election day procedures. So the, this is where we talked about the uploads. This is where it happens live. Election judges from each precinct bring the results back. It goes to that same central computer, again, off-network to compile the results and I'll pull. Four or five times on election night from that computer to see the upload to the state. So it's not. When the judge comes in and we add in their results, it's not quite done yet. I'll do it in batches from that computer to the state's computer. And again, we verify that. After election day, leading up to the canvas pretty thoroughly. So election night results are unofficial and it doesn't become official until we go to the county canvassing board. So every county establishes their board. The canvas board. School districts will establish their own and cities will establish their own as well. So for the previous election, you had counties canvassing the county race. City of Rochester, school districts, et cetera. Once we're done with that, we overnight it all to the state and the state canvases their results at the end of all of that. So local canvassing boards for us have to be the county auditor, the court administrator. The mayor or chair of the of the town board of the largest and most populous municipality and two members of the county board. The next thing we have is the hand count process. So we always have a post-election review following the election, the general election. Four precincts are selected at random at the general canvas. So they're selected after the general has happened. We select four random precincts. And at the post-election review, we publicly hand count all four of those precincts to verify the, again, the accuracy of the election. It has to be. You're verifying that the machines tabulated correctly. So we'll hand count through. If there were an error, we would have to count more and more. And eventually could potentially cause us to recount the entire race. So there are discrepancies. It would trigger more steps going through. But initially, you're just counting those four and verifying the accuracy of those four precincts. Again, open to the public, we publish the date and it's available. And then just the elections team here at Olmsted County were dedicated to ensuring the integrity and accuracy of elections. We take it very seriously out there. We enjoy what we do and thank you for your support.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It just occurs to me that, you know, with some of the individuals that were here earlier and they peruse our. Agenda, apparently they read a tooth and nail. I mean, to talk about the public, when they can speak in public and that, they peruse the whole thing. That they missed this elections update where they might have learned something about the process. I find it funny.
Mr. Turner, in the public comment period, there were some statements made about errors that were seen in other counties. And I'm assuming, you know, we we upgraded to having more professional staff and a year-round staff a couple of years ago. We can do that as a larger county. The counties that were mentioned, except for one, are really, I think they're all smaller than our county. So the voter integrity measures that we can use. If you're a county relying a lot on volunteers, I would think that there's, it's just possible. You know, to not count the right number of ballots or not to project the load that you're gonna have or to have errors happen. And it sounds like we've got a lot of procedures in place, yet they did tell us that we, they filed six complaints with the county attorney. About what they consider. Possible issues of concern within our, without our primary. Do you want to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it just seems to me like we've, we've invested heavily. In trying to assure election integrity here and we have the benefit of having a professional I T. Staff. We have the benefit of having. Four full-time staff that other counties don't have. And we rely still on a lot of volunteers. I think last month we heard. Sometimes people interpret just the tone of voice to mean something, you know, so or. There was confusion in a polling place about which ballots. Included the Rochester School District and which didn't. It 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 seems to me like we have. We have a lot of provisions in place, but there's still human error and there's still interpretation that people make when they're, when they are. When they're worried or when they're highly alert. It just seems, it just seems to me that we. We have done, we have, we have a lot of faith in you and the department and our many election judges, but we have something like what fifteen hundred election judges?
Right, approximately, countywide.
So fifteen hundred people who work, well, two days a session, two days a year. Who are doing their very best. I remember one. I remember one, one of like head election judge told me, we heard at our last meeting that someone was like, you don't have to vote for the other side, you don't have to, you don't have to be on the other side. And I was asking someone who is an election judge that I know socially, I told that story. And she said, well, she's down in Stewartville, and she said, you know, we had a lot of spoiled ballots. We had people who didn't understand that, so they would, they would have voted for two parties, or candidates from two parties, so their ballot was spoiled. And then we'd have to ask them to vote again because their ballot was spoiled. So she said, I can see where an election judge trying to be really helpful might state more than a voter thinks is necessary, that you don't have to, you don't have to vote for everybody on the other side. You don't, you have to vote in the columns, you know, it's like, we don't want spoiled ballots either. So there's, there's a whole human dynamic, as much as we have good processes in place and cybersecurity concerns. There's a human dynamic when you have fifteen hundred volunteers trying to serve their fellow citizens to have a good, fair, clean election. So I guess, I'm just sort of rambling, but I don't think errors made in another county, we have to be concerned if there were errors in our own and how we train people. But I think generally the board has a lot of faith that we've, you and your team and all our judges are working very diligently to ensure integrity of our elections.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think this encapsulates, we follow the law, we do it diligently, I think every county does. We have vendors that have to be approved, they have to go through the same steps. Is there a human element involved? Yes, but when I hear people advocating, make it all paper ballots and hand count, you want to open for a human error. Man, that's the way to do it.
Right.
That's the way to do it. So to put some of this stuff aside, we do investigate, look at every single complaint or anomaly. And in case you look at it and say, will it change the, the count or the election? Is there anything, a couple of votes are going to wiggle? If it does, then you take it seriously and do it. Otherwise, you say, there is a human error component in everything we do. So we do the best that we can. People, the technology, and the training, I think like every county does. You trust the election, and I've seen nothing that tells me anything that we have violated anyone's trust, introduced fraud, or done anything relative to that in the election cycle. Thank you very much for your update. Wonderful job.
Yeah, great update.
Mr. Turner, one other question. With the six complaints that have been filed with county attorney, what's our general experience with how long it takes? County attorney's been a little bit overloaded with the, after COVID and things too. What's our general sense of how long it takes a review of those complaints?
As far as, it depends on the time of year. Six, we've been very overwhelmed right now, not with just that, but with data requests regarding elections as well. So six complaints, depending on what they are, four weeks to a month. To look at, four weeks, eight weeks maybe to look into it and investigate it. I'm not sure the exact process that they have. But depending on each one, every complaint that we get, we either forward to the Secretary of State's office or, when appropriate, to the county attorney's office. We do look at every complaint, we evaluate every situation. And again, if we do receive a Minnesota complaint form from a judge or from any other individual, we do forward all of that to Secretary of State's office as well. We're completely transparent with that process.
Parker, Jennifer, you have it.
Thank you, Mark Austin, Olmsted County Attorney. Luke is correct, we look at each one of these, and it takes a little bit of time to discern where it should go. If it's something viable that, you know, that would be prosecuted criminally, then we need to send it down to the appropriate law enforcement agency to do an investigation, send it back up and for us to review it. And yes, it's an understatement that we're kind of busy right now. Thank you.
Do your due diligence.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you guys.
Perfect.
Great, great job. Alright, next up, Minnesota Department of Transportation presentation.
Yeah.
Hello.
Yeah.
We lost one already.
Would you like me to wait for Commissioner?
No, I think you're fine.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll have some comments.
Okay. Well, hello everyone, and I guess happy Tuesday, Monday. I hope everybody had a fabulous three-day weekend. I know I did, enjoying some of that warm weather, my husband smoked a brisket, it was great.
There you go.
My name is Hoda Lutz, and I'm MinDOT's District Transportation Planning Director. I want to thank you all for your time today for us to share information on planning updates. I'm not alone, I do have a backup team here with me today. I have our district engineer, Mark Schonfelder, Tracy Schnell from our planning office, and also our assistic district engineer, Fasto Cabral, has joined us. So thank you, everyone. Technology is working in my favor today. Today, as in the previous years, I'm going to go over some regional and state planning updates. We'll give you an update on what's happening with our ten-year district roadway and bridge work plan. And then we'll conclude the conversation with some local project updates. Feel free to raise your hand throughout the presentation, we'll do our best to answer questions. If not, we'll get back to you at a later time with that information. The first statewide plan update I would like to bring to your attention is the statewide multimodal transportation plan, S M T P for twenty-two through twenty-four forty-one. This is a twenty-year plan, which is updated every five years. And currently, this plan is out for public comment. So I urge you, if you have a little extra time, to check it out on MinDOT's website and provide your comments. Now, why is this plan, yes, Commissioner Beer.
Are all these projects in this plan funded? Is there money for them?
This, this is a plan that sets policy, is not a plan that sets, provides projects. This plan, this plan is important because it sets the policy direction for the state on our other plans and provides direction on how to program future projects. Some of the policy direction in this plan include aging infrastructure, climate, economy and employment, equity, safety and transportation options. The next plan that I would like to bring to your attention is called MinSHIP, the Minnesota State Highway Investment Plan. This is also a twenty-year plan that's updated every five years. It identifies investments by categories, but is not project-specific. And these investment categories are shaped by the projected revenue direction. This plan is in the early stages of being updated. And there's also, there's also opportunity for the public to provide your comments on shaping the investment direction for Minnesota State's highways. So if you check out on our MinnesotaGo.org website, investment, there's a budgeting tool where you can try your hand on how you would set the revenue and investment direction for MinDOT State highways in the next twenty years. They told me it's a fun tool. There are two more plans that I would like to bring to your attention. The first is the Minnesota Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan. This is a plan that provides the direction on how the state of Minnesota will start to invest sixty-eight million dollars given to Minnesota by the federal government for the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan. Recently, Minnesota submitted the plan for the first year of the funds. And for this plan, it identified setting up or guiding the charging locations for two existing alternative, alternative fuel vehicle corridors in the state, A F Cs. And that is I ninety-four and I thirty-five. In the coming years, every year, the next several years, we'll be doing an update to the plan. And a future A F C corridor that's likely to be seen in our area is I ninety, which will be a great start to connecting from Wisconsin over South Dakota and add to some of the private companies who have already installed some charging stations, such as the recent one at QuickTrip North in Stewartville. I'm a, I'm an E V car driver and I've used it, so it's a great addition to the area. The other more regional plan I would like to provide an update to, I know Commissioner Fisk is passionate about this, is dealing with transit. The local human service transit coordination plan was recently wrapped up in our area. And this plan is important because provides an assessment of the existing services and gaps in the services provided by transit providers, public, private, and also nonprofit. It identifies strategies, activities, and projects to identify by these gaps, as well as opportunities to improve the efficiencies. Again, this is a plan that is updated every five years, we like that five-year time mark. And it also helps provide the direction of funds coming from the Federal Transit Authority. Here at District Six, we don't have a large part in how the funds get directed, but staff who coordinate all of our central office, direct the funds, working with he from the city of Rochester, Ben and Charlie from Roacog, and how those transit funds get distributed. I do not have a bullet point on this, but I did want to mention that last year, District Six, we held a Southeast, Southeast Transit Roundtable. And we, and we brought together area providers for, just to have a good conversation and start making that connection on what's happening, so people can be aware of their services. We plan to do that again this year, looking for a possible date in late October, early November. Any, any questions on the four plans that I've mentioned here today?
I can say.
Yes, Commissioner.
I don't have electric vehicles, so tell me how this works. If I had an electric vehicle, I can stop and it'll fuel my batteries back up in how long of a time?
It will depend on the size of the battery and the amount of power going to it. The goal, kind of the goal is, it's called a level-three charger, which is the type of charger that charges the fast. And hopefully, within, say, forty-five minutes, it will bring up to at least eighty percent capacity or to a hundred if you choose to do so. And there are costs associated with it, an app kind of similar to the parking app here in the city of Rochester.
Okay, so you are paying for that electricity?
Yes.
And the current ones that you have on ninety-four and thirty-five, are they located like near a business? I would assume that if I had a cafe, I would like that one right there, so.
Yes, one of the big goals in setting up these future charging stations, which they hope to have approximately every forty miles, forty miles, is make it like adequate trip or gas station, because we don't want people in the middle, nowhere, just sitting there, having nothing to do, but provide an opportunity for them to enjoy local services in that area, go get that extra cup of coffee or sandwich.
How many, how many stations are there at each of these locations? Because I don't want to pull in right after time, and he's got this huge truck and he's going to be there for two hours. And I have this little teeny-ass car, and I only need fifteen minutes. So can I bump him because he's got some?
I'll let you guys arm wrestle, but they, there's going to be at least four to one occult plugins at each station.
First come, first served.
Commissioner Brown, you'll take pictures of the wrestling.
I have a question about, this would be a municipality question, I'm sure, but when we were in Holland, when you park your car at certain parking meters, you're going shopping, you're going to dinner, those parking meters had ways for you to plug your car in, and it would be charged against a credit card or something. And I know that's not what you're thinking about doing, but it's, I thought it was a kind of brilliant way, rather than Commissioner Wright having to wait in line, he could go park downtown and have a soft drink and a sandwich and come back. His car would be, would be charged. So if you, if you like that idea, it might be something you could suggest to municipalities.
Yeah, I appreciate that suggestion. I haven't heard of that, so I'll have to make sure to pass it on to the folks who are in charge of the E V update. Thank you for sharing that.
Sure. I wanted to ask something that sort of ties to Commissioner Padocca's. When I was at the National Association of Counties meeting this year, we were told that there is a federal program that's really designed to help municipalities develop charging stations that was going to bypass state agencies, was going to go more directly to local municipalities. So my question really is, is MinDOT, and they were also saying that they're intending to have a lot of technical assistance available, that they are trying to get money directly to communities for some of these projects. Ambitious goal. I'm wondering if MinDOT is looking to provide technical assistance to help smaller communities or larger ones like Rochester access those federal funds?
That is a question I cannot answer, but I will find out. I know that MinDOT does develop the A F C corridors that is going to go out to consultants, you know, for third-party agreements on the design and layout of the system. It's quite a broad group that was brought together to develop the first year. We had electrical providers, we had, we had your, all this used QuickTrip again, you know, your QuickTrip. So it just wasn't MinDOT, it just wasn't, you know, a city or state. It was a broad cross-section of folks providing input. But yeah, we'll, we'll dig into that for you.
One of the observations they made at this, at this national meeting was that it was a way for smaller communities to entice people off of the highway and into town.
Yeah.
So anyway, I think there's an opportunity for us to look, to work on this more as a region than we have in the past on many projects, so.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a great thing. I know there's other, you know, communities that will have stations, I think, over in Laverne, Minnesota. Had to go there for marching band competition last year. But it was just at a private business, like you said, across from Cafe, and there was two charging stations for folks to go there and charge. Thank you.
Sure. Go on, keep going.
Yep.
We got a new way to get people into town. Close intersections, we just jam them into town. We worry about everything else, we don't worry about people getting killed.
Yeah.
I know.
I thought it would come up sooner.
Why, Jesus Christ.
Alright, let's continue on.
So I'm going to go over real briefly just what makes up our ten-year highway plan. I know there's a lot of discussion and passion on some of our projects in the area. But besides a few of those, I hope I can, you know, share information on the amount of projects that we do have occurring in Southeast Minnesota, and especially in Olmsted County. What is the ten-year work pla, what is the ten-year work plan? Actually, it composes of two different timeframes. We have years one through four, which are program projects, and that is the STIP, the statewide transportation improvement program. And these are projects with a guaranteed source of funding that we've identified the needs. And within that four-year timeframe, we are working on the process to design, to develop and deliver. Currently, that would be for years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six. The second part of the ten-year work plan is the CHIP, the Capital Highway Investment Plan. And for this upcoming years, it's twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-two. That seems a long way out for probably several of us. And these are projects that are planned, they've been identified through the outreach, such as we do with your Olmsted County Public Works, your great Roacog staff, as well as other needs identified for improving and maintaining those bridge and pavement conditions and C Ds. These, even though these are in the plan years, it's still fiscally constrained because our plan years are based on projected revenue and meeting the investment categories spoken about in MinSHIP. Real briefly, I thought it'd be a great, great time to revisit, how do we get to our state road construction budget? It all starts with that state funding source coming through the taxes everybody enjoys paying. That flows into the Highway Tax Distribution Fund, which then is a source for local distribution for your county state aid highways, municipal state aid, as well as the non-state highway network. This flows into the State Trunk Highway Fund, which is also supplemented by the, by federal funding as well as existing trunk highway bonds. And this ultimately ends up into the state road construction budget. I I J A, this is the newest federal funding bill, which replaces the previous one, the FAST Act. It's for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. While the legislature, we have not the authority to spend the funds yet. We are still working on how we'll be using those funds. It's a great source of revenue, and especially the additional funding that coming to the state and local agencies is going to help, help us continue to make great improvements on our roadways. and local agencies is going to help us continue to make great improvements on our roadways.
Interesting question.
Yes, Commissioner.
We all have a great deal of frustration with the legislature this year relative to what they did not get done. It's a much longer list, it's much easier to say what they did versus not. Do you guys ever lobby or advocate, or you get your hands slapped if you try to do that as MINDOT? Or do you guys just let the process ride? Do you try to do any backdoor politicking or?
Mark is what, you too?
It's important to us, and we have done everything we can to try to force the governor to call a special session and get this stuff done. You can't even access the IIJA money unless the state puts in their share legislative. So we're out of luck even competing for those dollars which are appropriated and available. So that's my question. All the help that we need, all the things that we do to try to get them off the dime, put aside a few differences, get your ass up in St. Paul, and get it done. So do you guys have any avenues that are better than us for?
I just, again, recommend working with your local legislature. MINDOT, yeah, we, you know, we're prohibited from doing any lobbying. I mean, I think we've shown that from, we're very careful in the language on, I'll just say, our letters of support for, I think that we've provided for project, but be very careful on what we say in those letters, because we cannot lobby.
So you can get your hands slapped if you do that, et cetera, and be punished for, you know, sent to the penalty box for that. All right, I just needed to ask, I just wondered if there was any other help from any other category? Because it's frustrating.
It does get very frustrating.
Thanks.
It's not advancing for me here now.
It's working fine. Took a break.
Yeah, when it works, it's good.
That's all right.
Recharging station all night.
I know. We need any help if you can advance the slides for me. This is a slide that we like to share every year. It compares what we thought our ten-year forecast for funding was last year compared to this year. Green is the green line, or green line is the twenty-two through thirty-one revenue we thought we were getting. Blue is what we're working with this year. As you can see, we took quite a big dip, if you want to call it, in twenty twenty-six because the revenue forecast stayed flat. How do we handle this? You know, we've been out in the communities talking about projects. Well, unfortunately, some of our projects did have to get delayed. But one thing we like to do at the district is still continue to advance those, design and develop all those projects in case extra funding does come in. We're ready to make use of that. Next slide. Oh, now it's working again. Disclaimer real quick, I'm not going to read all these bullet points, but just really want to stress, the list and map of planned projects is a snapshot in time. They've changed since last year, they're subject to change in the future if additional funding comes forward, whether it's, you know, through IIJA or other special funding sources such as corridors of commerce. Our STIP, our ten-year work plan is constantly changing as new funding sources come around.
How can it be that pavement holding up better than expected means less funding? I would think it would mean more flexible funding.
Well, it means we're doing a good job at maintaining, you know, planning the right type of projects to keep that pavement condition where it needs to be at, but another area might not. So they're going to get more funding to bring their pavements up to what's called a good pavement condition. It's counter to, Commissioner, it took me a few years, you know, completely understand it. Just the following maps, I know it can be kind of hard to see in the PowerPoint, but I believe PDFs were also provided. If you not get those, I'm happy to forward them on to you so you can see them a little bit better. This map highlights the projects that we've been working on in Southeast Minnesota for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two construction season. One project I'll mention in our area that just started today is Highway fourteen, going from Marion Road over to Chester, where we're surfacing the project, as well as replacing some of the culverts and making improvements at the seams, which also include pedestrian improvements. This map here is a snapshot of all the program projects that we have in Southeast Minnesota in our Leaven County District. We have a little over three hundred million in program projects in the next four years. In the next, in the following six years, we, this is a snapshot of those projects in the next six years, and there's just under six hundred million dollars currently of investment in Southeast Minnesota. Now, I'm going to get to the map that you're probably most interested in. This map here shows the planned and program projects in Olmsted County in the next ten years. In the next ten years, MINDOT is investing over a hundred and twenty million of the program in Olmsted County. A few of the projects, there's a few projects you want to go over, and then there is room for local project updates or further discussion. In twenty twenty-three, we have programmed the Highway fourteen and County Road three reduced conflict intersection that was delayed. That is now programmed to have construction in twenty twenty-three, as well as we're going to be replacing two bridges just on the west side of Chatfield and Highway thirty. There will be an open public meeting for that Highway thirty bridge replacement project this fall. So keep your ears and eye out for that, and please join in that meeting to find out more about next year's construction. In twenty twenty-four, we're going to be back on Highway thirty. And from Stewartville to Chatfield, we're going to be resurfacing. I know the Cumminsville area, that pavement is quite bumpy and needs some work, so that'll be good to get that done. Also, in twenty twenty-four, we're going to be beginning the construction of the Highway fifty-two and I ninety Bridge Replacement and Interchange Improvement Project. That'll be great improvement for freight flowing through the areas with some of the safety concerns that have come, been brought to our attention. In twenty twenty-five, we're going to be in the heart of Rochester, Highway fourteen Belt Line, repaving that section of roadway, going from Highway fifty-two over to Marion Road. And in twenty twenty-six, currently programmed is a roundabout at Seventy-Fifth Street and Olmsted County Road one twelve. While it's funded in twenty twenty-six, our staff is collaborating with Ben and Kay to advance that construction to twenty twenty-five so we can make that a safer intersection sooner and still be able to use those funds. So that's going along, those discussions are going along well. Then the outer years, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-seven, we will be doing some projects on Highway fifty-two southbound from Olmsted County Road twelve up to Highway sixty in Good Hugh County, as well as repaving I ninety westbound from Highway sixty-three to County Road nineteen. And in the subsequent years, we have another project on I ninety, as well as we'll be repaving Highway fourteen westbound from Bayonne to Rochester. In twenty thirty, Highway fourteen eastbound, the opposite section from Bayonne to Rochester will be repaid. And then we'll be, and then we'll also be repaving Highway sixty-three, going from the River Bridge in Stewartville down to Highway sixteen. And then in twenty thirty-two, currently, we're planning on a couple of projects, and that will be repaving Highway sixty-three from I ninety up to Highway fifty-two, as well as doing Highway fifty-two northbound from Eighty-Fifth Street to Good Hugh County Road seven.
Question.
Yes.
ROACOG came back and asked for the J-turn at forty-four and fourteen. Is that possible to program in twenty twenty-three, next year?
That was brought, I believe there were discussions, but it was not brought up at the last ROACOG meeting.
No, I know, I wasn't there, that was part of the problem. We have one at the end of the month, but I'm asking, is it possible to program that for twenty-three?
My understanding there to be, I'm not aware of all the discussions, but there would be some challenges in trying to do that. I know Greg Paulson and Kay have been talking about that, but the program that does comes some challenges where they're at with the pre-designed work and the environmental documentation for the Highway fourteen and County Road forty-four interchange.
So we're not sure if it could make a letting in January or one of the early lettings.
No, I am not.
But you mean a ROACOG resolution regardless.
I can follow up and let you know about that, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Yep. So through these conversation bubbles, we've already, I've already covered, so I won't go into details. When I was chatting with Ben Johnson a couple of Fridays ago, he said it would be great to provide an update on our Highway fifty-two southbound reconstruction, while not in Olmsted County. It certainly does affect how we go from, go up to the cities where they're joining a Twins game or the state fair. That project is on schedule and is proceeding quite nicely. And it is, it should be completed in the fall of twenty twenty-three. Additionally, I know everybody's aware of the great partnership that we have between the county and the state, advancing that pre-design for fourteen and County Road forty-four. And this partnership is really putting, will put that project into a good spot for project readiness for special funding opportunities, which has been shared with me for the corridors of commerce legislation application is a category. Our Highway fourteen expansion project to the west of the area scored high in that a few years ago, and the fourteen and forty-four development and the partnership we have is heading in that same direction. Any questions for today?
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
In the north side of Olmsted County, there's an intersection of sixty-three and two forty-seven.
Yes.
Okay. There's not a lot of accidents there, but when there are accidents, they're pretty bad. Is it any thought to do a roundabout to that intersection?
I know our traffic department has taken a look at that. I'm not aware of them ever submitting it for a safety funded project, but I can follow up for you and just kind of see what they've been looking at at that intersection.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. How many years will it take to get Highway fifty-two to be a freeway?
Many, 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 many years. It's one of those things that we, as we have opportunity and we work on the project, we look for ways we can access closures and buy, you know, just a safer travel way. So bit by bit with, you know, time, but it'll take some time.
Bit by bit, I think, is an appropriate way to describe it. Thanks.
Ms. Chair, you mentioned earlier my interest in the human services transit coordination, and I haven't really followed what you're doing here. It appears that you have a draft plan and it's open for comment right now?
The draft plan comment period just concluded. We're going to be having a presentation on the local human service transit coordination plan at our October area transportation partnership meeting. And if you'd like, Commissioner, we can forward you on an invite to that meeting, which is open to the public if you'd like to hear more about it.
I would like to know where, thank you.
Yep.
Any more? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a great rest of your Monday, Tuesday.
Thanks, you too. Okay, we'll move forward to groundwater protection and soil health initiative program update. Martin.
Sorry about that.
Always happens, always happens.
This is not an ideal location for the power button.
It's supposed to happen.
All right.
Morning Commissioners, good to be here, thanks for having us. My name is Skip Langer, Olmsted Soil Conservation Manager, and I have Caitlin Brady, Martin Larson, and Angela White here with me from the SWCD team. As you all know, we've been working on Soil Health Initiative here for a number of months. I guess we started back in May of twenty twenty-one with our initial conversations. And, you know, when I come to a board meeting and I look around the room and the room's packed, I often think that people are here to hear the talk. Soil health.
Just keep thinking that way.
Stormwater, you name it.
Optimism.
Optimism, that's right. Anyway, we do have an exciting program to share with you today. So our work on the Soil Health Initiative has gone on for these fifteen, sixteen months. And the team has done a great job of getting information put together to develop the program. So we've been working on a rollout for this fall. We're offering several enrollment options to our producers here in Olmsted County, one of which is cover crops, and that's the program we'll roll out this fall. The second is alternative cropping and small grains, and the third is a hay and grazing option for producers. So the Soil Health Initiative, you know, is a program to promote the use of beneficial management practices and crop rotations on our farms here in Olmsted County. These practices, they target reducing the leaching of excess crop nutrients in the groundwater. That was kind of the primary focus, groundwater protection. And we're also immobilizing unused nitrogen from the rooting zone. We're also reducing soil erosion, which as we know from this year, and the rain events that we had early in the spring, that's also a key component and additional benefit to soil health practices. So these practices will promote the improved soil health in Olmsted County, farm sustainability, and also producer profitability. So Martin is going to give you a short presentation and kind of stick into the three slides that we've shared in the past and updated those for you. And I'll have Martin come up and get an opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Once the money was allocated to this program, we had a, you know, a project to create, right? And anytime that we're looking at, you know, cost share opportunities, maybe the best thing that we can do is contact the people that we've already worked with that have done things similar. And that could be across the United States, could be locally. So you see in one there, we accessed and researched multiple resources for the program design, including state cost share options, other local SWCDs, NRCS, which is the federal wing of the conservation of USDA, and Maryland Department of Agriculture, which would be the Chesapeake Bay, you know, initiatives. And then we started to identify management incentives, which would increase environmental benefits and payment, and couple that with the payment rates. So you had a payment rate and you had an incentive, right? So we had to start matching this up. Like, what would the incentive rate be? How far do we want to stretch the dollars? What would the upper limit be on number of acres applied? And that was a balance game. So we consulted other people that we know well, other farmers, and bounced this off of them of like, where's the balancing point at which an incentive would meet, you know, the potential cost of implementing the practice, the learning curve, et cetera, right? And where is a realistic cap where it's appropriate for the producer, appropriate for the colony?
And it also gives us proof of concept on this whole thing. That's really your balancing.
Correct, yep, yep. So we're developing and developed a web-based landing page which includes the application forms and the certification forms. So Caitlin's going to go through that in a little bit. And that's pretty exciting because, you know, we want a deficient delivery of the program to the producers so that we can maximize staff time efficiency, but also the producers' time as well, that they can do it from their smartphone or their desktop. So either from their desk or even out in the field when it comes to certification time. So either from their desk or even out in the field when it comes to certification time to certify that the, you know, what they promised they would do is what they did. So apparently I'm not advancing. There we go. Um, now I had this slide up before, uh, but this is taking the three million dollars and putting it into uh, potential buckets that Skip outlined of cover crop cost share, the um, alternative crops, and then the hay and grazing. So as I stated earlier, um, a few months ago, it doesn't mean that this is the dollars that has to be in the individual buckets. It's just our best guess on how that may be spent in our knowledge of the producers that are in the county and what they may want to pursue, what fits them best um, on their farm. So there's a range there because we have lower limit payment rates and upper limit payment rates. Because we can start with a base payment rate on the cover crop side of things. If we're willing to get it to twelve inches high, this is what we'll pay you. But if you're willing to go to twenty-four inches high, we'll pay you more because that's a better um, investment for the county because there's more nitrate capturing, better soil protection, et cetera, right? So as the management is enhanced, the payment rates increase. So picking the middle of the road because not every producer is going to pick every enhancement, it may not fit for them. And that's also on the alternative crop side too, when that comes around, that there could be, you know, a legume cover crop enhancement as well. So that's that range there between, you know, a number of acres affected of nineteen thousand to thirty-six thousand, three hundred in the cover crop range. So that's how we how we get to that. So our next steps, which even since I made this slide, you know, we're we're into this. Um, and that's complete the contract document development so that we're ready to roll out um, some dollars this fall for for fall seeded cover crops. And then that would have a county attorney review to make sure that we're keeping ourselves out of the ditch. And that process is uh, definitely started. And then beta testing or bouncing this web uh, web document or web application back to the farmers uh, one more time, uh, which has happened to get their feedback of, you know, for that line right there, that survey question made absolutely no sense to me. You guys need to read, you know, something like that. Or um, it most of the feedback we've gotten has been good and it's, it seems to be well down that trajectory of um, of delivery. So I don't, should I stop right here and ask if there's any questions? And then Caitlin can kind of pull up the web-based application?
This is good.
Any questions?
A a question out of ignorance. Um, saying no nothing about farming. Uh, does this really mean that we, once you've got the county attorney's review, the beta testing will have to wait till next year, or can they actually uh, sow some of the fields this fall and we can start beta testing this fall?
So we'll we'll separate our beta testing, which would be to do like, like how Caitlin's going to demonstrate the landing page. That's kind of the beta testing in in definition then. As opposed to a small scale, a smaller scaled rollback, uh, rollout, sorry, of funds to actually get out on the ground and get practices started this fall. So yes, um, when we button this up, then this fall seedings can start. And we can start with a smaller number of contracts and um, and get get it rolling and okay, this isn't working very well. We're going to have to change this part of it. And this is working very well. We can charge on with this, right? So that was the intent. And if we get way more applications than we have the smaller scale rollout, we'll do like a lottery so that people can get in this fall and then, you know, definitely be ready to apply next year for the next funding cycle.
So we will be able to launch this fall?
Yes.
And we'll be able to learn as we go?
Yes, which is the best way is learning as we go sometimes. Because um, yeah, anything unforeseen or whatever, like I I I assume we'll find little things here that need to be changed and adjusted.
And are you getting a general impression that this is going to be well received?
Yeah, because I'm getting a lot of questions about it already. We're kind of having like, put a little bit of, which is good, right? Hold the crawly back just a little bit, like on Black Friday when you open the and everybody runs in to sign up. I mean, maybe not quite that level where they're pushing and shoving, but we want some, you know, some chatter and excitement about it, which it's, you know, we're having a producer meeting this week on Friday. And we just kind of let a little more out, right? And because is it the sixty forty rule where sixty percent of your business comes from word of mouth? Well, that farmers, you might as well up that a little bit because they they talk a little more often, I think, so, so.
Well, I I have a question before you go. Um, so say you're a successful farmer and you you're enrolled in the program, you're one, are you guaranteed for year two, three, or not?
No, there would be no guarantee it um, that it would be first come, first served for the signup. And uh, we have thrown around ideas of like, you know, so like when you uh, sign up for college class, you're on a priority in the next year that you're kind of first in line for your next year. Um, because we do want it spread across the largest number of producers to be able to access it. And we don't want, you know, a certain number of producers to always be getting in and some left behind. So that's it would be most fair to open it up each year um, so that anybody can apply for it. And no one's really treated as priority unless they may be on a waiting list, you know, to get in for the next year. And maybe they would have priority, okay, it's open to that group first to make the application and then the rest of the general public. I think we've got a great, we haven't made an exact decision on that yet, but it's a concept that seems to sound good.
Would seem in my mind that if it's successful and they see results and see a reduction in use of fertilizer, et cetera, hold the soil better, that that word of mouth would spread and it's always nice to get some money for doing it, but if it's a good practice, improves my business and improves my land.
Encouraging some social change, so it's putting a little bit of a wave behind some social change. And we see that already that, you know, we try to foster little areas, right? So Byron has one where everybody's kind of trying to do the same things. And we try to foster little areas around the county. So it's, you have a producer that's kind of a champion, so to speak, that everybody is looking at, that's doing a good job. And and they are kind of scattered about the county. So yeah, it it's like, you know, if you went to a deer hunting uh, stand and you never saw a deer, but yet that was the best place to hunt in the whole county on average, right? So we want to encourage multiple years of of use, of course, to to not just give it one shot and be done, right? I mean, that
Right.
That that it's an educational side of it that we're
That's great.
Yeah.
I think one other thing that that is, you know, this isn't something that we've just started. We we have had the Soil Water Conservation District Board developed a thirty-acre, three-year um, uh, thirty dollar an acre um, program that has been successful. And and that did require producers to implement for three years in a row. And so we anticipate folks to to jump on board. We're we're kind of looking at this as a a pilot, even though soil health practices aren't necessarily new. They are new to some people, and so we want to roll it out in that manner so that we hit as many producers as possible. And as Martin said, the idea is that we have kind of a cultural shift here and change in how how farming and management happens, so. All right.
That's great. Thank you. Caitlin?
Caitlin's up.
Good morning Commissioners. I'll try not to turn the computer off again here. Um, just a very brief show and tell, we wanted to uh, give you a little um, sneak peek of what this landing page is going to look like. So when a producer goes to enroll in the program, this will be kind of the landing page that they will be sent to. Um, like Martin said, you know, most of this is uh, an online system. We tried to do as much as we could to streamline the process so that it's easy, efficient um, to get through the process. And so we have quite a few resources here. And right now this is only open internal to staff. We haven't published this to public yet. But when it is, we can share that with you um, through a Friday report or something like that, so you can explore it uh, in real time yourself. But we've been able to utilize the county's uh, Esri enterprise license to be able to develop all of this. So this this landing page was developed in Esri Hub. Um, we've also, we also are using the Esri enterprise license for using their um, survey one, two, three software. So right now um, we're going to be rolling it out in a in a small pilot format. So small grains, hay and grazing will not be open right away, but the cover crop will. Um, so this is part of the the beta testing. We've sent these links out to some producers to test, make sure that it's all operating correctly um, outside of our county system, um, and gave them the opportunity to comment any of the questions. So when you uh, select the cost share program, uh, they'll be able to easily see the policy with all of the the county requirements for the program and eligibility requirements. Uh, also on here will be the application for them to apply. This is also where the where they will come at the end of their growing season to certify their crops. So if they're going growing cover crops, this is where they'll come. They'll have an online certification process. Um, they can upload pictures right on there to show us the crop, um, give us all their uh, information so that if we need to, we can send staff out uh, to do spot checks. I'll just briefly click on this so that you can see.
So they got through it, they have to agree to come back and certify.
They have to certify.
Otherwise you're going to be knocking on their door and dragging them to a computer.
Right.
Martin will do that.
Burrito in the bath?
I think from start to finish, you know, the the application probably process probably takes five minutes.
It didn't take long at all.
Does not take long at all. So um, we realize that this is all an electronic system. There may be producers that have difficulty with that. So our intention is to have, you know, staff available in the office. If somebody needs to come in, we can be available by appointment. Um, we might even have a day where we just open the office and people can come in all day long and we can get them enrolled in the program. Um, obviously, again, this can be a much smaller scale this fall, probably what, twenty, twenty-five producers potentially? Um, and then that also helps us a lot with uh, understanding what those our staff need is going to be uh, as we roll this out on a larger scale. With that, I think unless there's any more questions.
That's great. When do you expect the role with the, we have a link on the website. How soon?
Well, we're still getting through some of the final uh, contracting and and program requirements, but hopefully by the end of what's the
The end of the week or Right now, we're um, we're through a a portion of the comments that that Tom Canaan had had. And so um, we'll work through the rest of those, I think, this afternoon. Um, and so uh, I would see rollout as soon as possible um, in order to, you know, it it's time right now to to get those cover crops planted following uh, uh, silage removal and and whatnot. So anyway, um, I think, yeah, we'll hit the round, the the ground running as soon as we can, probably about twenty signups, right?
Can you just tell me what are the, what are some small grains and what are some large grains, just so I know?
Well, small grains and alternative crops, they, I guess small grains are things like oats, um, barley, um, wheat. Right, yeah, things like that. So um, I don't
What's a large?
Things small and large.
Drenchiated between like a roll crop.
Like corn?
Right, corn, soybeans.
That's large.
Kind of
Okay.
Bundaged with some canning crops, which generally are considered roll crops, peas, sweet corn.
Right.
Sweet, and then small grains would be any of your um, wheats, triticale, uh, rye, oats, barley. Um, would all be small grains. And then there would be a subset of like, not necessarily a subset, but a alternative crop. That there are some developing crops um, that this, we learned about Samfoam last week, which is uh, grown in the county, or I think it's in Olmsted or just in the Dodge, an alternative to alfalfa.
Should I use the microphone? Because come come to use the microphone for recording.
So yeah, so it would be a specialty crop for horses. Um, so yeah, we would have alternative crops also in that. Um, I know we had small grains on the landing page, but we're, it's alternative crops as well.
Sunflowers.
Sunflowers would be this gray area of a roll crop, actually, so. But we do have a list, we went through of nitrogen scavenging uh, uh, crops. And the the pick list in is in there and subject to approval of something that we wouldn't have foreseen, like Samfoam.
So nitrogen scavenging means it it
Eats nitrogen.
Leads it, leaves it in the soil or depletes the soil from it?
Takes it from the soil, puts it into the plant, holds it there in a more stable form to be used in by the system rather than lost below the rooting zone through leaching is the loss of the nitrogen through the rooting zone because nitrogen carries, can't bond with the soil. It gets carried with water. Once it's in water, it's not coming out unless you run it through reverse osmosis or a plant, which is what the roots, the purpose of that. So we're we're taking crops that are good at that scavenging and not leaching.
Uh huh. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I think what we'll find with alternative crops and and probably um, will drive it will be markets. So if there's markets available, I think it's, it will probably have an attractiveness um, to plant those. Um, there are other species that we've been, you know, that are being studied and and planted in the area to a degree, like uh, intermediate wheatgrass, Kernza, you may have heard of that. Um, canola, I mean, there's several other types of alternative crops that that can be used for oils and and their grain. Um, but I I think that markets will ultimately drive what gets planted.
It's fun to see how this turns out.
Yeah, it will be. Yeah, thank you very much for your support. Appreciate it.
Very cool.
All right, thanks much, guys. Great job. All right, next up, administrative showcase internal services.
Who's got this?
Don't you always sort of expect the administrator to sort of stand up and pull back the curtain or something? Being dramatic for the administrator's showcase?
Showcase because of big picture.
Who's between curtain one, two, or three?
There you go.
Do this, right?
All right, I can go first, I guess. Am I okay? Go next?
You guys deciding who's presenting or what?
In a coin or no?
It's Matt there. First, who's on first?
They're mean.
Well, beef.
Commissioners, we might skip through the first, oh, there's Mr. Peabody. He's online. There he is. All right.
Hey, sorry, I didn't make it down quite enough, quick enough, so. All right.
Oh, man. IT guy.
All right, Matt, I think you're up.
Yeah, I uh, now I can't see the screen and see what's uh, what we're on.
We need to call IT.
Yeah, we're seeing you. We're looking at you.
I know. Uh, so can we see the, uh, Clara, can you drop it down so we can see the presentation? Yeah, that'll be fine.
Perfect.
There we are.
Yep. All right, sorry about that. Okay. And if we want to skip to the next slide there on our board, uh, we talked a little bit about this uh, earlier. Uh, one of our big pieces in here was the HHH um, uh, presentation. And actually, we're uh, actually at the end, so I had created this earlier for one of the earlier updates. Um, HHH is now almost completely paperless across the board. We've rolled it out for FSA, HSA, or not HSA eight. FSA, CFS, and AFS, um, all have their paperless system and caseworks. Uh, and we are ready to go on that and using it right now. Um, it's actually funny because right now we have some people that are saying things like uh, um, what are we going to use to hide some of our paper that we still have? Uh, and we we just keep finding it and digitizing it. So um, that's a little joke is that they don't, they don't want us going in and cleaning out their stuff, so. Um, so yeah, really, really successful project, really big partnership here between all of the HHH, not all of, most of the HHH departments, ITS and countywide, um, really to get this going. So uh, really fantastic work on caseworks implementation here. And then next slide here. Uh, and we talked about this one, some of you have may have heard this in the uh, administration committee. This was the ability to add This was the ability to add, uh, more redundancy to our systems by, uh, replacing our entire infrastructure. So where all of the data sets, all of that stuff has been replaced. Uh, I, I think we have one server left to move over and we're in the process of doing that. So we migrated all three hundred and fifty or so servers onto the new system. Um, and now we're balanced across our data centers. Uh, we have some better recovery in case something were to happen to the government center. Uh, and then we also have a lot better backup. So we talked a little bit about ransomware and the ability to protect on that. So this is mostly done, uh, the, one of the last things we're going to do is throughout the, the rest of this year is talk to each department and try to figure out what's most important to them. Um, if you remember me talking before, um, we went from weeks, uh, to restore our data that we had before to now down to days to hours. And we want to see if we can start squishing that a little bit more for certain applications. So let's say for elections that we were just talking about earlier in this meeting, we want that to come up as quickly as possible. So that might be a tier one. Um, but if there is some other piece of documentation that's maybe archival and we need to go look something up, that might be something we could wait two or three days, uh, for that to come back up. Because if somebody requests a, uh, birth certificate or something like that, that might be something that we could wait a day or two versus during an election that might have to be coming up right away. So that's kind of the, the end goal for this is to make sure we're all aligned on what needs to come up first. So that is that update there. Uh, I think that's my last slide. Do you want to advance it here, Clara? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, I guess I forgot to ask for questions. Were there any?
Any questions for Matt?
I just want, Matt, how aggressive have you seen attacks lately? And you feel pretty confident or is it getting more aggressive or is it?
We talked about this a little bit earlier. Um, one of the things we noticed was an uptick after the war in Ukraine started. There was a lot of nation state sponsored activities that were happening. Uh, those activities continue to happen. We're actually working with the state to try to stop those at the state level. So we share information that we're seeing with them and they're sharing information down with us. Um, and it has continued to be very often. I told the commissioners this morning that it was tens of thousands per day, uh, that we're really blocking. And we're hopefully also starting to log these a little bit more and more comprehensively. So then we can start correlating things that are out of the norm. So it is coming fast and furious and it doesn't show any sign of letting up.
Right. So the other key is just education, let people know, never click on something you don't recognize because it can slip through unbeknownst. And, uh, be very, very careful on what you click on.
Yep, that is, um, one of the biggest things that we noticed is the business email compromise is what they call that. So you click on it, somebody gets in, um, then they'll usually sit and talk about stuff. Uh, one of the things that we do know is, is that that is one that we're preparing for in case it happens because it most likely will.
Yeah.
But what we're trying to do is minimize the damage that happens. So we're doing things like, um, I don't know if you guys get, I think you might. We've got phishing tests where it actually sends out a fake email and then we actually monitor those. So then if I were to say click on that, I might have a remedial training that I have to go through. Um, luckily I haven't. Uh, actually, if you remember, Mike Steer spoke about the, uh, elections. Every once in a while forward him and say, hey, this one was pretty good. Um, he doesn't control them directly, but he's the one that reviews them if they get reported. And we report, you know, ten to twenty phishing emails per week at least that are legitimate phishing that he verifies and then sends it up to the company to make sure that we're being safe. So.
Great.
Absolutely.
That's, that's great.
Uh, actually, I wanted to ask about phishing because it feels to me like I've given several notices and been told I, I actually identified some, which made me very proud of myself. But, but I'm wondering, when those happen, if there's are, are there, are there firewalls inside of our systems so that someone who gets in?
Oh, yeah.
Through, if, if I'm inadvertent and let somebody in, we have, um, sequestered, uh, you know, we've, we've got, we've got firewall so that it can't go very deep.
Yep. So I'll, I'll, I'll take probably three parts to that piece. So first, um, thank you for reporting it. Uh, know that whenever you report it, we actually go and rip it out of anybody else. So sometimes they'll send it to both you and me, uh, and maybe some of the other commissioners. And when you report it, we find it as valid phishing. We actually go into everybody's inbox and grab that specific mail piece and pull it out. So then if I hadn't seen it yet, then it may disappear and I won't even have to touch it. Um, I won't even have the ability to touch it because it'll be gone from that. Um, so that's one good thing about reporting it. Uh, second, we are, uh, we use a thing called least privilege. Um, and what that means is, is like even me as IT director, I don't have access to a lot of the apps out there. So if I were compromised, um, we actually section off my account. So then I can only access the data that's specific to IT. So I can't say go in and get public health data because I don't have access to that. Um, in addition, we are also starting to do more network segmentation. So when you're talking about firewalls, that's exactly it. So before we kind of had a, a, a split by building and we had some splits by certain areas, like public safety was sectioned off. Um, we are moving to what we call zero trust, which means by default, I can only get to the systems that I want. So we have two layers of protection there. The app says I can only get to this stuff and the network says I can only get to this stuff. So those are two layers of protection. Let's say if I'm compromised, if I let somebody in, they can only see so much and they can only access so much from there.
Yeah.
So absolutely we do multiple layers there always.
Got to do it.
Yeah. Anything more for Matt? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Julian Curry, I'm a resource director. So I have quite a bit of details in my slides, unlike Matt did. But I'll be brief so you guys can read through and get updates or ask questions that you have. Uh, the biggest thing that we, uh, have been working on over the last year is our comprehensive compensation plan. Where we looked at all of our salary ranges to see, uh, where we fall in the market, which we are very competitive for the most part. We do have some work, uh, to do, catch up or to be more competitive on some of our entry level positions. Uh, but one of the bigger things we're looking at for our comprehensive compensation plan is, uh, how do we maintain that competitiveness going forward? So we are looking to shift, uh, how we go about classifying our jobs. In the past, we've used band and grade, uh, tool. We're moving to a jet tool, which is a little bit more comprehensive and, and looking at the finer details of a position or the environment that our employees work in to better, uh, establish, uh, their salary ranges, market ranges. We're looking to roll that out in January of twenty twenty-three, uh, as well as, um, make sure we got proper procedures in place of how we promote individuals, uh, individuals transferred from one position to another or department to department and make sure that we maintain, uh, salary equity throughout the organization. Um, so feel free to ask any questions about any of that. Another big accomplishment was we did hire our recruitment, our recruiter, uh, Cassandra, Cassie Ray. Uh, um, she's on board, been on board for a little over six months and jumped right in, uh, working very closely with departments. Um, spare, uh, some of our hard to fill positions specifically in the sheriff's office. And we've seen an uptick in our candidate pool, especially in the sheriff's office. So, uh, I think we're in the right direction there. Uh, she's attended several job fairs in her immediate area, uh, including Winona County, uh, uh, some of the local high schools here, partnering with workforce center on some of our, on some, some of their initiatives. Uh, and we're learning, uh, related to, uh, employment in the public sector. So we want to continue to grow those efforts. Uh, so that's going very well. One of our bigger things, like I said, is trying to increase our diversity, uh, across the organization, which we have seen an uptick. I believe, uh, last year at this time, we were, uh, right around upper seven percent, approaching eight percent. Uh, we have actually crossed over to the ten percent, uh, just a month ago or two. As of right now, we're at nine point nine three. We did have a little bit of turnover over the last couple of weeks. But we are still striving to get those numbers in the double digits. Uh, you heard a little bit about, uh, admin committee heard a little bit about our remote work initiative. So we're still looking to, uh, offer up remote work to our staff. Um, we have a large, uh, percentage of our staff that are remote, working from home. Uh, one of the big things to tackle regarding remote work is going across geographic boundaries. Um, exploring, uh, the ability to offer remote work in the state of Wisconsin and Iowa. So we have some logistics around Fair Labor Standards Act, uh, tax laws and to get in place to be able to accommodate those staff.
Julian?
Yes.
There's been controversy on that over the years about certain people living in California. What are our parameters? Cause I'm uncomfortable with somebody living in California yet, working for Olmsted County.
You and I both. California in, from an HR world is hands off. You don't mess around with HR, uh, with California HR laws, employment laws. Uh, yes, so executive management team are, have ongoing, uh, discussions on landing what our philosophy would be. We're leaning toward allowing staff to work remotely in the state of Wisconsin and Iowa because those are our border states and we have a decent staff population that's commutes from those areas. Uh, outside of that, it would be on a case by case basis, based on hard to feel, uh, highly skilled, um, talented staff.
I, I, I don't agree with that. I'll tell you truth.
What's that?
Even the neighboring states.
Mm-hmm.
I have a, this is Olmsted County. If you wish to work for Olmsted County, I think you should be part of them in the community or southeastern Minnesota. Cause there's a, there's a lot of controversies. I'll just bring up one superintendent that don't even live in their school districts that is very controversial. I would think if you want to be an Olmsted County employee, you should be part of the community.
Uh, duly noted. I like said, we're still having the conversation at EMT level. Uh, the one thing that we are struggling with that, we, you know, many of us feel that's similar, uh, similar way is tough labor market. Recruitment, staffing shortages, unemployment rates, finding skilled, qualified employees. You know, we tend to have to stretch out our borders. Right now we do have a decent amount of population that is commuting from those areas. We haven't put a stipulation that they have to reside in the state of Minnesota or in Olmsted County.
Well, again, I don't think that's the right avenue. And I have one more question, Mark.
Sure.
Back to the banning grade to your jet.
Mm-hmm.
Are the unions receptive to that?
Uh, right now, uh, our discussions are, uh, they are receptive to that because, um, it's not that much of a change. With decision banning grade, the, uh, number one thing that was the driving force was around decision, level of decision. That's not going away. That's getting better defined under jet along with other, uh, cha- characteristics of a job or the work environment. So it's better defined, better understood how we classify a job, uh, under jet. So the impact to staff is going to be pretty minimal. Um, they'll still see, they'll still know their salary range. Um, the only thing is we're just moving away from the classification of, of C forty ones and, and B twenty twos.
Okay, so a history of somebody C forty one, somebody has a history of C forty one. If this is implemented going into next year, what are they? Just whatever management feels they are?
They are, they are whatever job title they are. So if they are an administrative assistant, that's what they are. It's administrative assistant. And here's your salary.
Okay, so him and me are both C forty ones, but I do more work than him. What does that make me?
Wow.
It, it makes you a commissioner.
Not next year, I won't be a commissioner. I might be a C forty one.
Well, what I'm saying, your job title is you are a commissioner and your salary range matches, you know, the county attorney. You know, that's his, that's his job title.
But what you have that problem to us too.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we were going into next year to C forty ones, but that's eliminated. But I'm saying, I do more work than he does. So why does he get paid the same rate? At C forty one, we're both paid the same. Who's gonna make that call?
Well, it's not who does more work as much as, you know, the type of work you're doing. Uh, there's, there's the amount of decision making that the impact of your decision making, the environment that you work in.
Who makes that call? Your office, management? Who makes that call?
So who makes that call is a collaboration between HR, the hiring manager and our, and our outside vendor. So it's very much the same, that decision banning grade was that same process. We are utilizing a similar process. That process hasn't changed.
But back to the union workforce, the unions go, well, we're all equal theoretically. All that, that is going to be eliminated?
As far as what's that now?
As a union, it's kind of a collective bargaining unit.
Yes.
Now going forward, I'm hearing another agency in HR is going to say, this is what you are. And the history of what you were C forty one, well, you want C forty one.
Yep.
E something, whatever. That is not transparent in the future. It is the feeling of management to feel what you're worth.
Okay.
Each year.
Okay.
So if I went to a C forty one and a D twenty one, then after two years I could go back to a B twenty eight if I don't feel you're worth that much.
And it's, it, it doesn't work that way. So, okay, when we were in the banning grade, we had outside vendor that we partnered with to review, third party to review all of our job or at least come up with recommendations. That's the same, same process we're going through right now. Where you see the shift is, is the shift is from what is my classification, job classification? Cause all D forty, all D forty one was to do was to, was to call out the, the salary range. Our culture has shifted that I am a D four, I'm a D, I'm a C forty one. That's been the shift. It's not, it's not you, the person or you, the job as a C forty one. That's the salary range. The shift to this new model is the focus is putting on the salary range. Are we offering you a fair and equitable, marketable salary for the work that you're doing, for the job that you're doing? So from a standpoint of the unions, there's not, there's not going to be a change, a significant change to salary range unless we deem that we need to be more marketable, which wouldn't be any different if we were still under the banning grade or under this new system.
But I, I still feel, again, we're both C forty ones. I do more work. You will have conflicts in your workforce of who's doing more and not, and what are we?
So you would still have that same issue if we were still in decision banning grade. We still have that fight that individuals see it as, I'm doing more work. I should be a C forty two versus a C forty one. What I'm saying is we're folk, we want to shift that focus from, from the hierarchy, C forty one, C forty two to a salary range. So am I paying you thirty dollars an hour? Is that a fair, is that a fair range for the work that you're doing? That's.
Yeah, I, I see problems for you. Not, I like people to be treated fairly, but I see problems of
Mm-hmm.
what are we in this office, this wing or whatever? I really see you have problems there.
And like I said, the biggest, I mean, many organizations do the same thing where they have salary ranges for the jobs you do. And behind the scenes, we have to put names to the salary range. But employees, staff don't know about those ranges. What we've done in the past is employees have become aware of those names and have attached those names to the person, meaning now you have a hierarchy. If I'm a B twenty four, I can't challenge a question to see. Meaning now you have a hierarchy, if I'm a B twenty four, I can't challenge or question a C forty one. Or, you know, C forty one, I can dictate the work that a B twenty four does. And that's not the height, the C forty one is just based on, that's the salary range. That the market has said that you should be paid and that's, that's the name of our salary range.
Then why do we have managers or anything?
Well, I'm just saying.
Dictate the work.
But a C forty one doesn't necessarily have to be a manager. C forty one could be a, a colleague, a staff person.
Well, I agree, I just picked C forty ones.
Yeah, and I did too, so I'm just saying, outside of the supervisor, yes, supervisor, it should be based on the title. How, how that communication or how that work is divvied up.
So we have a disgruntled person at the lady that comes forward. If this is implemented and go. Hey, I, I, I appeal this, or this ain't right, I'm worth more.
Yes.
So what do we, what do we say to them? Well, our consultants say, you're only worth this much, and our managers, so there is no.
So we have the data.
Check the balances, I wanna say.
Yes, so we do have a check the balances where we review. The job, the tasks, the responsibilities, we compare it to other jobs that are similar. Within the public sector, and if it's a job that has, that's held in the private sector, we would try and reach out to get that data. Just like any other compensation data. No matter if we went from to the new system or staying with decision banning grade, that is still gonna be a, an ask from employees. That is still something that we, that we work with managers and departments through, but we still have that in place.
Oh, I'm gonna pick up all the time.
Ford, what do you have Heidi on hold here?
Oh, I was just gonna follow up on some of that remote work. Uh, to point out that, that we actually have two different policies. One is about remote work generally, right, and that's done and been in place for at least a year. That's the uh, what has helped us make sure that we are being consistent. Uh, with our twenty five percent that are working remotely full time, twenty five percent that are just hybrid, they're working. Part time, um, remotely and part time in the office, and then fifty percent that are still, that have always been and continue to be in the office. So there's that policy, now we're working on, okay, what really is our out of state policy? Right now, by my count, we only have three people that are working remotely, um, out of state. And they are carryovers from, it's not because of the pandemic, this is Charlie Ryder. And a couple of other really unique situations. I would say that in general, we feel like. When I say we, I mean, the executive team feels like it needs to be only for very special circumstances when we do that. Uh, remote work. With the exception of, alright, the person's living in La Crosse versus La Crescent, or the person's living just over the border in Iowa. And they do a job like, um, eligibility work, um, we probably would want to treat them the same as the other eligibility workers. But those far away, uh, far flung kind of situations are really far and few between. It would never be a director, uh, we've talked about, well, that would never be a supervisor. It's really these very, um, specialized like a Charlie Ryder. Kind of situation where somebody who has very unique skills ends up living in Indiana. Um, so just wanted to clarify that piece.
I appreciate that clarification, cause I, I shared, Commissioner Flynn's concern about. Moving to assuming that we're gonna do widespread recruiting from other states to fill our workforce. Um, I do think, uh, I have a lot of questions about the comprehensive compensation plan. I don't think I've heard much about it before today, I don't think I have any real understanding of it, and I just ask that we. Uh, maybe, uh, delve more deeply before we get too far where, where you're asking us to approve a, a major change when we don't have the basics. Uh, and the sim- similarly with the, the remote work, I, I think one of the issues for. You know, I, I mean, I'm thinking I'm a little old fashioned here, but. Um, we are a public entity serving a community of a geographic area. And the more our, our workforce feels part of the community, in many ways, I feel more that our workforce. Has a, has motivation to serve in a way that's different than if you're just doing a job and coming in. So I, I really would like to look carefully at that remote work question, uh, not so much, um. You know, maybe using technology for some delivery, but I really do think there's, there's impacts on teams. There's also impacts on your connection to community and feeling part of trying to make this. Homestead County a wonderful community rather than just getting your paycheck and saying you did your job there and you built your resume. So I, I think it's a, it's a nuanced conversation, but I think we need to have it with you, and we haven't. Uh, we haven't really delved deeply into those, those, uh, those new trends.
So, and like, uh, Heidi was mentioning was around, you know, certain positions, certain teams. That allow the remote work here locally. Okay, so then if we do have individuals that are commuting. Before we extended out, expanded on our remote work, we've been allowing remote work for many years in certain departments. What's happened since COVID is we figured out ways that we can expand that and allow it to other teams, other departments. And so if we're allowing it, and we're making the assumption that they're living locally and we say you can work remote because the work allows you to. How do we say no to those that have been commuting maybe for years? From nearby bordering states of Iowa and Wisconsin. Now, when I say talk about recruitment, the whole recruitment aspect is. Focus on recruiting with the expectation that they're living in our community, that they're looking to relocate to our community if they don't. But we're not saying, making a requirement, so we're not trying to recruit in California. Or, uh, to further out states. Um, like I said, that's, and if we did, that's that expectation that they are looking to relocate here. Like I said, we're, we have a few that are not in those border states. But those were at times of offer, uh, they brought a special skill set that we just struggled to find in our backyard.
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I just want to back up a little bit, um, to Commissioner Cascades comment to give you the baseline here. People are only allowed to remote work, whether it's hybrid or what, so whether it's part time or full time. If we can deliver the best or better services to customers that we can do in person. So if it, if it isn't the best practice, it's, it's not gonna work as well to do that remotely. At least as well, if not better, then people aren't allowed to do that, right? So we're not gonna let somebody, I don't know, let, let, well, a good example is some of the work from DFO, from corrections. Where, um, Travis and Nikki and the supervisors there, we had to allow people to remote work during COVID. But part of what they learned was it didn't work as well. So, in some ways, it worked better, cause you could connect to people, but then you really lost people. And so that is no longer, that's a changed, uh, that's something we learned and we, we went, um, the other direction, back to in office more in that example. So I just want you to understand that as a basically, we're not just, it's not based on employee, um, request. This is based on the work and what needs to happen, uh, um, in order to do the best work. Some jobs, um, and I think you could appreciate like eligibility workers, it's totally behind the scenes. They're not interacting with a person except maybe by phone, right? Not all of them, but at, on a, uh, given day, there might be twenty of them that are really, they're just plugging away. They can get more done, and we've measured this for years and years, even back to Mina Wilson when, when she was here. They get more done when they're at home, because there's just less interruptions. Now, there's lots of other issues that Commissioner Cascade had pointed to, like how do you continue to maintain team? Um, how do you make sure that people are still eligible for promotion? Even though they maybe aren't in person at certain meetings, there's lots of things to think about, and we're thinking about those all the time. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to just mention is, I agree with you, and I think we all agree with you that there's. A huge benefit to having employees be in county, that's why most of the time, um. Administrators are required to, it isn't actually in my contract, by the way, but I do live here, and I'm not planning to change that. But a lot of times it's required of administrators to live in the county. And while we like that of our employees, we would be, we would, we wouldn't have enough applicant, we would be in a world of hurt. If we weren't allowing, uh, people to be living, especially in our border counties. We don't have tons and tons that are commuting from the cities once in a while, but if you think about how many employees we have in, that live in. When I own a county, some of them sitting right behind me, Dodge County, Fillmore County, Good Hugh County. It would be really hard if we tried to limit it just to this county of residents. So just wanted to, uh, put those couple more comments in for your context.
Like I said, I know I gave you a lot of information, this is just for you to have your notes, and we can have follow up conversations, follow up meetings as. Uh, as a group or individually, so next thing I wanna highlight was employee satisfaction. Talked a little bit about recruitment, we wanna retain our employees, so we did the employee engagement survey. Throughout the, about a year ago, toward the end of last year. We got those results, we, we, uh, shared that information with different departments. Departments came up with action plans that impacted their teams or their departments. Uh, and so that, those are being implemented, uh, to, to put action with the, with the data that was learned from the survey. Uh, in place, uh. High fives is our performance feedback, uh, we're doing a better job of getting that timely information out to staff. Which is a huge, uh, employee satisfaction piece, uh, so we're doing better, we still got room to go on that. Uh, as you guys know, Know Your Rewards, we're coming to the end to that campaign. Uh, as of a couple of weeks ago, we were at seventy one percent of employees rewarding, earning the points. Uh, we've implemented employee and manager self-service in the hub. So once again, helping with that communication and having extra, uh, added resources and information data. Available to employees and managers. Last slide, or second to last, just training, this is just some of our training initiatives that we've. Uh, continued with or added to, uh, the one thing that's, uh, key, I want you, key takeaway is our monthly supervisors trainings. Uh, we've offered the different trainings every month to supervisors, and we've had a large attendance. Uh, we average just around a hundred employees attending those every month, so that's been well received. Uh, we've had, uh, the other thing, thing I wanna point out is the mental health. First aid, we had several staff complete that training to assist, uh, staff. Uh, in some of those areas, so they're noted with a yellow ribbon.
Green, green.
Green, green ribbon, sorry. Looking at Claire with her yellow, green ribbon, so they have green ribbons, uh, either on their lanyards, on their IDs. Or on their, uh, email, uh, tags. So they're, they're well, they're easily recognized by staff to assist with any of those questions. As well as our wellness teams is there to support, uh. Uh, we once again kicked off or restarted, uh, was on hiatus with COVID, but we're kicking off the ambassador program. And the RCTC leadership program, um, getting those back up and going. So we're excited about that, we've had the actual, we actually had, uh, quite a bit of interest in both of those programs. Um, from, from staff, so we're excited to get back to somewhat normalcy there. And the last thing was just kind of recap of how we handled COVID nineteen. Uh, around a few things and some history there, uh, lot of, a lot of technology updates to be able to track. Some of those, collect some of that data, uh, early back, um. Uh, with that, we were able to offer up a wellness incentive for the wellness rewards, in which we had a nine hundred and eighty four. Uh, staff participation in that, and they all received, uh, wellness rewards and as a result, so. So they got their Know Your Numbers campaign off to a quick start. Um, we continue to monitor, uh, the positive COVID cases. Um, with our safety and risk management team, uh, some with our first responders with sheriff's office. We're keeping track of that as far as potential work comp claims, uh, OSHA reporting around that. Um, that's where you see the administration of COVID leaves, uh, and so forth, so. Uh, we continue to, to, uh, focus on COVID, uh, around the positive test and just keeping track of. Uh, of, of the status of our staff, uh, the next, the big thing now is partner with public health to get. Uh, the boosters out this fall, uh, and collaborate in, in partnership with the flu shots clinics.
Is the green bandana the same as the green tag, tag you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Bandanas, ribbons, so they.
Okay.
Multiple ways to, to highlight their training and certification. Any other questions? Cause I think that's it for me.
Alright, thank you, Julian.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for this? Nope.
I think that concludes actually our whole month long of updates, I think that is the last one, so.
Alright, before we get to board committee reports, we got three volunteer applicants.
I'm going to approve the three people for, uh, volunteer service. Janessa, Winters, Fartun, Hamad, and Amy Klein.
Take a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board committee reports, we'll start at that and Stephanie.
No report.
Nope.
Then, great.
No report.
What, she, what? Matt, come on, save us.
No report?
Yeah, nothing?
Report?
Alright, no reports, alright, I'll do a short quote then, uh, today's quote is from Muhammad Ali. It is that the mountains ahead to climb that wear you out, it's the pebble in your shoe.
Both through a journey.
That's pretty good.
That's a good one.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, we have a cow, let's say ten minutes.
Right here.
Where's the cow?
Right here, can we do it right here?
Stay in here, we, we, we're staying in this room, because it, the reason we're staying in this room is we have a technology issue on the, in two.
Okay, alright.
Ten minute break.
Minute break.
So.
That's what they work over.
I don't know, we'll see what happens.
The one issue of the truth. Ward three.
I, we live.
Ward six is what I'm.
That's great.
Tom is ward three.
It's great, I think.
District three, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, so where do you live next?
Northwest.
Northwest, so you're not in district three then, if you're northwest.
Not district three, ward three.
Well, you see, county commissioners have districts, cities have wards and precincts. The wards and precincts don't match up with the districts.
No, they don't.
No, but if you're northwest, it's not clear, that's why you've never missed you, that's fine. But, yeah, that's why, why you haven't ever seen anything from me, because I haven't been in your area. But I do communicate with my. Yeah, sorry, but you know, I do have a website and. Yeah, that's right. But you know, I do have a website and you can look at my website at any time you want because it's all county news, you're careless of where you live in the county. Pretty easy, homesteadcounty.us. Homesteadcounty.us. Or you can search for Greg Wright. And you can get it on your phone. So in your, sitting in your rocking chair out there in the cool breeze on the patio. Look at it on your phone. It is. Yes, it is, it is, it is. And when I go around, um because I've been walking through my district and going through the second time uh now, um I do a lot of education. The first thing they say, I I don't have a county government, I live in the city.
Right.
Yes, well, that's interesting. Remember the city is in the county. And of course, it's, well, why? Well, because the county has has this responsibility, the city has this responsibility, you know? With the responsibility, yeah, anyway. So I do a lot of education. But it's really lots of fun to go out and talk to people. Yeah, okay. I'll give you my standard answer. I do not performant on anybody else's make sure that what we're doing in the county is appropriate. Oh, yeah. I'm full time with the counties. So don't ask me state questions, cause they have to do that. Don't ask me federal questions, they have to do that.
I had a gusher this morning.
Well, the one that we're all going to be facing over the next few years is going to buy a car. For me, I'm looking for a pickup. Am I going to buy electric Ford, electric one, or am I going to buy an internal engine? Cause whatever I'm going to buy is going to make, gonna have to last to. And their distances are less. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Check the maps, you go to my website and find maps. In order to, you can also find maps, you can tell.
I don't seem to have a hard time there for a while. Jeez, but that ain't kind of fired up. Uh huh? See, man.
I got it. We got lunch at that? Good watch. Yeah, I'm eating here, I'm eating here. I'm eating here. Thank you, appreciate that. Appreciate that, sir. I have no idea what this is. But I'm sure it's disgusting, right? I'm hungry. Watch the turkey.
What are we gonna do, take over the Ucare?
Oh, they want us to do more work for Ucare, but they're paid for it. Hundreds of staff, but they pay us. So it's kind of seems like an easy kind of decision. I'm skeptical. Guarantee, I mean, yeah, he kind of skeptical of anybody.
There's like a hundred sandwiches back there, Kay, if you need one. Travis, you too. What's the next one?
Legislative.
Oh, thank God.
Legislative group.
Are you on that legislative group? Put the funding for one oh four on there. That'll make a big difference.
Yeah. Do what?
We want funding for one oh four.
Yeah, well, I know.
That'll make a big difference.
Mm-huh.
I would have told Schoenfelter to shove it. If I would have stayed in here, I I couldn't pick it. I don't know how you didn't. I would have told Schoenfelter exactly what I think of Minda.
It will be, I believe, totally, totally quiet. And said, for representing your district.
Have a jackknife in your pockets.
Nice.
Maybe I'll bring an extra napkin.
My eating, I suppose I should check for roast beef.
Beast.
It wasn't extra, but I will share.
Yeah, bring it back when you're done. But.
DOT lady? I I have my doubts too, but I don't know enough yet. And maybe there's more to it, but on the first, the first blush, I'm like, ooh, I think this is ripe for controversy.
It is.
Points you were making. Cause we've all been there.
That kind of update, there's just no information.
You'd be very informal with us.
One to four, five to ten.
Somebody said it's a long time since six.
They seemed to get that money for Sixth Street awful damn fast.
This is the committee of the whole, we're in here, you know, committee of the whole.
For a bridge, it's a book, yeah.
So don't, don't be intimidated. To you, and I just remember how scared I used to be at the county board when I was sitting there. We're terrible at reading the ground.
I didn't worry too much, but the thing is, people expect your super talent, your local collective. You should live there, you should be proud of your kitchen, play together, all through that. It just, it's not, we're gonna share, it's all good. And explain that, even though what it is, I wouldn't. Cause there's always a percentage of you. Yes, yes. I agree, it's that face to face kind of accuracy. So bottom line. No, I, you don't need to, you don't need to. A flipping kid, kid, he's trying to help the businesses. That's what the kid, he don't survive. It's what they like. They want you around. The A pins, ain't gonna miss a meal. They are gonna put an haircut in there, they don't have.
Yeah, just anything for my.
Mm-huh.
Just ask the question.
Should we?
Mm-huh. Yep, this is all, this is all on paper. You know, you, you gotta do that face to face.
Our ass camera, I know.
The span that, I don't.
Starting to feel.
Why you laughing, it's Charlie right here.
I'm not worried about dating pins.
So you might have a few little Charlie's buttons, obviously, again. Look, you need to be around the community to make these, answer decisions. When I got COVID, there's much screen stuff.
If people adjust, bring it up, they adjust.
Matthew Johnson.
Yeah. The number of trips a day, if they go west. They can still come back and around three, they come back where you. If they're oriented down. You need a copy of that?
Alright. A lot of them, sure, it's near you.
And coming out of town, you just take a while, yeah. I'm not.
I've been concerned with you guys. He's followed up.
He's accepted.
He's sitting in front of the screen. So this shows about you were too much of the stuff, you were too much of it. Get out in the community.
The gravel road there by Alicia's and Lee's?
Volunteer at the musical, volunteer anywhere, just do something. That's all about, so.
I hope you ever talked to a B B C in the same thing.
I got asked, never heard you ask, but.
No.
I'm really pretty next to him.
I mean, that's a different person. I have no idea who's it.
Alright, alright, we got everybody here, let's get started. Who's got this? Who's got it?
I'll get us started. Afternoon commissioners. I know it's uh already been a bit of a long morning, but we appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. Um I brought a few folks with me from our Aging and Care Coordination Services. And they're excited to share a bit about the work that we do. And we have an ask, as you know, we often um folks seek us out for the work that we do and the way we do it. And we're really proud uh Ucare has approached us to expand some services and want to make sure folks really understand the work and understand um what what is being asked of us. So I've got Kathy Burns uh and Kimberly Martinez here, who are going to uh talk more about this and will try to be clear and concise today.
Thank you.
Thank you again for having us. Um as Amy said, my name is Kathy Burns. I'm a social worker by trade. I've been at the county for about twenty nine years. Started in child protection and now I've moved to the adult side in adult and family services.
And I'm Kimberly Martinez, I'm the Public Health and Leadership Program Manager with Aging and Care Coordination.
Could you step to the mic? I'm having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
Sorry, yep. Repeat? Okay.
Just, no, keep going, but I just was having trouble.
Okay, yeah. So I've been with Homestead County about three years. One of the cool things about um Aging and Care Coordination is we are a group of social workers and nurses who work together. So the nurses from Public Health came up and we work collaboratively um to serve people in Homestead County. So we're here today to talk a little bit about um Ucare and the contracts that we currently have with the health plans and what their ask is of us for January of twenty twenty three. Um and we're here to present that information and to get some direction from all of you as to the direction you're comfortable with us moving. So Ucare has approached us um to do some additional work for them in managed care. And we'll talk a little bit about what that is um starting in January of twenty twenty three. So what is care coordination? As you can see from the pictures, um care coordination, it works with many different populations, the mentally ill, uh the elderly, the disadvantaged in terms of folks that are on medical assistance, um the developmental delayed folks, um anybody with a certified disability and on medical assistance in Homestead County. Um some history, back in two thousand and five, um Homestead County was approached by Blue Cross Blue Shield and Ucare to provide a service called Care Coordination. And what was happening back then is managed care came into the Medicaid, the medical assistance population as a way to help them navigate their health insurance. So as you may or may not know, back then, um folks that were on medical assistance weren't using their insurance as um economically or as best as they could. They often frequenting the nursing homes, the emergency rooms, or the hospitals. And so managed care came into that population to say, hey, how about if we help you find a doctor? How about if we help you get to medical appointments? How about if we help you so that you can live safely in your own home, whether independently as you possibly can in your own home, and get to the services that you need. So managed care came into those health plans. They approached us and said, in your county, would you be willing to do care coordination? And back then, um you all, or whoever was on the board at the time, said, yes, we think that's a great idea. And so for the last seventeen years, we've been providing this service and it's expanded over the years. And basically, the health plans, we now work with three of them. We work with Medica, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Ucare. And they send us a list of folks who are on medical assistance. So they've all gone through the FSA, the Family Support and Assistance um Department. Are certified on um either a disability or they're on medical assistance. And they come to us and we help them navigate their services in Homestead County. We help them find a doctor. We help them get to their doctor's appointments. Help them resolve a bill. So Mayo calls them up and the coding is wrong and they get billed for five thousand dollars worth of services. We help them figure out how to clean that up and how to fix that. We help them find a dentist. Um we help them get to an eye doctor. So if you're on medical assistance and you go to Mayo Clinic, for example, as your primary care provider, you can go there and get your eye exam done. Um they say, yep, you need glasses. Can't get your glasses there. You do, you'll get a bill. So then you have to go to a different provider to get your bill. So it's just helping them sort through um their health insurance. So if any of you have ever navigated your own health insurance, it gets complicated. You have to use providers or things don't get coded right. In this population, they're all poor. Some, many of them are all disabled. Uh many of them have limited supports in their lives. And one of the cool things about what we do is we can be that support and we can help guide them. So they feel safe, comfortable, willing to go out and see these providers and know that there's less of a chance of them getting taken advantage of or getting hurt in the process. We serve, this is a snapshot of the different types of folks that we serve based on race, age, um and different languages. You know, Homestead County has a plethora of cultures that live here and different languages. And we provide care coordination to folks, um anybody that's on medical assistance. So if they speak a different language, we use language lines, we use interpreters to help with that communication process. And here's a timeline of, I had mentioned earlier, we started back in two thousand and five with two health plans. And when we started, we just worked with the elderly, so anybody that was sixty five and older. And in two thousand and seven, they approached us to take on another population, which was um a population of eighteen to sixty four that are all certified disabled in some way. In two thousand and fifteen, we added Medica to, um, our care coordination. Two thousand and nineteen, Public Health came up and joined us, um, and then two thousand and twenty-three is this next potential contract.
All right, so this graph does explain a little bit more about what the ask is. So currently with our care coordination that you're seeing, the green represents the people that we actively serve, and then the blue dot population is cases that we get in. We screen to see if they are willing to be engaged in us for services, and if they're not, we send those cases back to Ucare. In twenty twenty-three, the ask is that those cases will not go back to Ucare, we will be managing all of them. Regardless of whether they are looking for services or not, there's pieces of their care that we're going to be involved in, such as transitions in and out of the hospital, um, helping them to navigate the healthcare system. So being involved in care coordination has more than active engagement, there's a passive part too, that we, they're proposing that we take on. And that means that the higher caseloads that we're going to have wouldn't be able to be managed by our current staff that we have.
Could you say a little bit more about, about the, um, is a very significant move from, you know, to have care coordination and be assigned care coordinations, what?
Yeah, so right now, what happens is when people, um, select to have care coordination, then maybe they need a PCA in their home, and they're looking for something very active that we have to manage. We have to have the providers and service agreements in place for them through the health plans. And so we are helping to actively navigate those pieces of it. Whereas in the background, if they went into, and they're actively, actively engaged in care coordination, they know us, we are helping them navigate the system, we are keeping them on MA, all of those pieces are active care coordination. When they're more passive, um, at this point in time, they're going forward would be, maybe they don't need a PCA, but maybe they have things going on in their life that, like transitions in and out of the hospital. Where we would be doing outreaches to them or to their providers to make sure that, that there is no gaps that happen with the in and out of hospital. So maybe there's not an ongoing service that they need, but there's going to be other pieces of their health plan or their health needs that we're helping them to navigate. Could also be transportation. So if they need a ride to doctor's offices, maybe they don't want to be part of the care coordination, they can have it every day. But there's pieces that we are able to pick up that don't have that, um, full care coordination benefit.
Do you want to do this?
Oh, we do. Oh, most definitely.
Just checking.
Oh, most definitely. Um, we see the value of it, because right now that population, maybe they, you know, I think in that population, you don't know what you don't know. And when somebody is cold calling you and saying, hey, I'm from your health insurance, and that health insurance is also MA, there's suspicion of the government, right? Um, I think we help to bridge that and help them to be more actively, um, involved with their health and help them, I guess, navigate a system that's hard to navigate.
And does this save money for Ucare?
I don't think I could answer that. I, we contract with Ucare to provide a service that they pay us for, and.
Yeah, of course, that's not, that wasn't a fair question. Um, all right.
Yeah, well, it's, there, there, there's layers of it, because the state has contracted with Ucare to manage healthcare. And everybody who is on MA, with a few exceptions, has to enroll in a health plan. So the state is actually contracting with Ucare, then they are subcontracting with us to do what they need to do to basically meet that country's needs.
Okay.
I assume because they don't have the staff, not local, so they delegate it to the gated authority, which is the county.
Right?
All right, man.
Um, I'm looking at your graph here, and then obviously in twenty-three, the projected go way up. That's one question, why is that higher? Then I'm looking at it, you have the two active connected members and the, the ones that weren't, use enrollment. Who makes that call?
That's, that's the same kind of question I was trying to ask earlier.
So will the county make that call if they're active, or the ones that won't make it? Who makes that? Obviously, who makes that call?
So for this population, it's eighteen to sixty-four, and they're all certified disabled, and they're all on medical assistance. They can choose Ucare at this point in their life to manage their care. It's a choice for them. So they have chosen, the person has chosen, go on Ucare. So then Ucare sends us a list, and says, all of these people have chosen to be on Ucare, and you are assigned their care coordinator. We outreach to them, and we say, hey, this is who we are, this is what we can help you with, are you interested? Right now, if they say, no, I'm not interested, in the blue, we send them back to Ucare, and they sit there for another year, and then every year they send us another list. What they're proposing for twenty twenty-three is that we keep them all in-house, and we outreach to them every six months if they're interested or not, to see if maybe they've changed their mind. Maybe they've had a health issue that's come up, or a transition into a hospital, and now they have different medical needs. Or maybe they want some help in navigating their care.
So the county will decide if they're accepted or not, if we proceed with this plan?
No, they will automatically.
Automatically?
The person really chooses.
So, get, the, on, the, the blue, the contract that refused enrollment, I guess I need an explanation of that. Where do these people, who refused them, and where do these people go?
So all of the people listed up here, whether they're in green or blue, are on medical assistance.
Good.
Um, all of the people up here, whether they're in green or blue, have chosen Ucare to manage their medical assistance.
Okay, hear that.
Okay, so the people in green have said, yes, I want to work with you, I want you to assess me, I want you to write a care plan with me, these are the ten things I want you to help me with. So we keep them open, we have a caseload of social workers and nurses who manage those.
That's it, okay, now the blue, the blue, it's the ones I'm worried about, the blue.
The blue, we've called them up, and either we couldn't get a hold of them because we didn't have a correct number, or they said, you know, I'm fine, I don't need your help, um, you can call me back next year. So we send those folks back to Ucare, and Ucare does care coordination for them up at the Ucare level up in the cities. And then every year they send them back to us, so we try again to see if something's changed in their lives. What the difference is between this year and next year is we won't send them back, we will keep them on a caseload, and we'll try to engage them every six months to see if they would like care coordination.
But it sounds like to me, is those blue people, can I say that?
Yes.
They don't want the services. It sounds like Ucare doesn't want to screw with those people anymore. It's not a profit center for them, so now we're going to take them over, and we're going to end up, that's just, just what I'm hearing. I, you straightened me out there, because I'm sure I'm not hearing it correctly. Sounds like Ucare doesn't want to mess with them every year, so we think we can do a better job messing with them every year.
To be honest, we can do a better job, and we agree Ucare cannot manage them. We've proven over the years that we've done this back and forth, that they aren't doing a good job, and so you're right. They're saying, we want you to do it now, and this is what we're, we're asking.
So the growth that you're showing in the green bar for twenty, for twenty twenty-three is actually expanding eligibility as well, right?
Well, they, they gave us a projection of numbers of, um, over time, we are seeing twenty-six new people per month coming on your enrollment.
I'm really having trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, they're giving us projections over time, that every month we're seeing your caseloads are growing, and that's because more people are going on medical assistance. We're going to show a trend.
So they're going on medical assistance, someone they go, they're choosing Ucare, so the Ucare enrollment is going up.
Correct.
It's not, I, I, I also got confused by the, uh, by the, you know, eighteen to twen- eighteen to sixty-four, sixty-four and older category. All of these right now, we're, we're, we're people eighteen to sixty-four.
This particular slide is only reflective of that group.
And so the twenty twenty-three slide isn't, isn't, there isn't a new age group or an eligibility.